Good evening. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, October 29, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided on the town website. And if we could all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
Brought you out on a chilly night. Do we have any announcements? Ah, look who's at the podium.
Thank you, Mary Melzowski, Town Clerk. Just like to take the opportunity to give some presidential election updates. Friendly reminder, the election is Tuesday, November 5th, one week from today. Our polls will be open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. All of our usual polling places that we had in place for September are still in place for Tuesday. We have had, in the so far week and two days of in-person early voting, we've had 2,126 people come and vote live here at Town Hall, beginning on October 19th. We have to date accepted 7,009 ballots that have been cast already for the election. And our early voting list, which would include some additional failed ballot deliveries, might include some second deliveries of vote-by-mail ballots in situations where a ballot was destroyed or not received. We have 8,981 entries onto that list to date. So we have three days left of in-person early voting. It is here in this hearing room, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, again tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. I encourage anybody to come in if they wish to vote early. Anyone that does have a vote-by-mail ballot, that wishes to vote that vote-by-mail ballot, please make sure that it is returned. It needs to be postmarked by November 5th, Election Day. We need to receive it. If it is postmarked, we need to receive it no later than November 8th through the mail system. Any other delivery method is required to be on premises in the Town Clerk's office by 8:00 PM on Election Night. So if you're using FedEx or UPS or are hand-delivering it, it needs to be here by 8:00 PM on Election Night. We will check that ballot drop box, and if it is not arrived by then, we're not going to be able to count it for the election. So I encourage anybody that still has vote-by-mail ballots, if you wish to vote that ballot, please do so earlier rather than later. The other thing that is available for people who are unavailable for November 5th, if they cannot come in in person, they still can come and vote in person absentee at the Town Clerk's office up until 12:00 noon on Monday, the 4th. So for anybody that is unavailable, it's a little different than in-person early voting in that you're swearing to us that you're just not able to go to the polls on Tuesday. That is still available for people up through Tuesday at noon time here in Town Hall at the Town Clerk's office. So I just wanted to give those updates. And again, if anybody still wants to vote their vote-by-mail ballots, please do so earlier rather than later to ensure that we receive it on time and we can actually process it.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, just, well, actually, two questions. One, you said the 7,000 sent and then 8,000. Those are, the 8's included already in the 7 additionally, right? It's not 8 plus 7?
Correct.
Okay.
So the 8, the 8,981 list would include some ballots that might have failed delivery and we sent a second one. So an individual might have two entries on that list. But essentially, we have mailed out minus the, maybe including some of the 2126, we've mailed out close to 9,000 ballots for this election.
And what happens to the ballots that come after the 5th? Between the 5th and you said you'll accept until the 8th?
So we count anything that is posted in the mail, returned through November 8th. I believe the deadline is 5:00 PM on November 8th. We count those ballots in a post-tabulation session. That will be, those numbers will be updated on our official tabulation records. And then our military and overseas ballots, they have until, as long as they are postmarked on the 5th, they have until the 15th to get received and by us if they are mailed. So those get counted in a post-tabulation session, and those numbers all get finalized before we certify the election. And that has to happen before November 20th. So the election really isn't closed out until November 20th with the Secretary of State's office. So it's really a two-week process to finalize the total numbers.
Well, thank you, Mary.
No other questions? Thank you all.
Men, to you and your staff, you're going to be very busy people for the next couple of weeks.
We have been and we will continue to be. Thank you.
Okay, announcements?
Well, there's people on.
Thank you. Two, oh, public first, go ahead.
Vida, do you have an announcement or do you have a public comment? Vida?
A public comment.
Okay, well, we'll hold for announcements then, Joyce.
Thank you. Just two items. The Cape Light Compact found out last week that the Energy Efficiency Advisory Council from the state unanimously approved its entire energy efficiency plan for the next three years, 2025 to 2027. That's the one that got presented here by Maggie Downey. The second thing is, and I say this to congratulate the town of Barnstable, but I also say it with a green, envious face, they have received a $42.3 million federal grant from the Department of Energy that's going to do a mini-grid at their high school, that's going to do paid internships for high school students, that's going to involve all sorts of exciting things, possibly career-oriented for the young people with Eversource, but that is also going to strengthen their town grid, and it's going to make possible more facilities at their emergency center. So next time, I hope us. The grant was filed by a young man named Sean Hogan, who's only two years out of Tufts, that they just hired a year ago to be their energy coordinator. And darned if he didn't spend half a day, you know, of every workday looking for good grants. Anyway, so that's happy news for the Mid-Cape. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other announcements? Public comments? Liz?
Good evening, Liz Argo. In anticipation of our first agenda item, the Yarmouth Town Seal, I think it's going to be well-received because it depicts so many of the aspects of the town of Yarmouth between the trees and the water, commerce and the boats, and clean air. So I'm very supportive of the new seal being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board members. Tom Nacanella from the very historic village of Bass River, as we know. And being a very historic night tonight, as you have these wonderful people here dedicating their time, the volunteers on the committees have done our town well. We have a writing from Reverend Timothy Alden, which was one of our pastors, a second-generation pastor here in Yarmouth, from 1798. And he writes, "So as late as 1779, there was a small cluster of wigwams in the southern-eastern part of the town, about a mile from the mouth of the Bass River, which was inhibited by some of the remains of the Pocahontock Indians, and the chief of them at this time had small parks. Five of those who had survived and 11 died. It's probably that the part of Yarmouth that will never retain the name of Indian Town, which is Bass River Village, also known as French Village. And originally, it started off as Indian Town. There is still one wigwam on the banks of the river, which is occupied by Negro and squaw. A little to the southwestward of the Indian Town is Swan Pond, as may be seen on the map of Yarmouth, which was sometime since prepared by the direction of the General Court. On the northeastern side of this pond is a spring, just above which, about 40 years ago, stood an ancient Indian meeting ground on Swan Pond. We all know the one on Long Pond. Another historic note, about 100 years ago, August of 1924, one of the first hotels on the Cape, the Aberdeen Hall burnt down on Great Island. It was open to the public. It was a wonderful event for our residents to gather and have fun. And my last comment, I've been taking care of the Adopta Islands on Old Townhouse Road for over a decade. A couple of weeks ago, I go over there in the morning, and I do my weeding, which is very good for my head, and I clean the grounds, make it look nice. And there was a light, which is on the south side across from the crosswalk. There's one on the north side on the park entrance. And over the years, the trees have grown into the street, now causing a shadow from the light, so you can't walk across the street at night without proper lighting. It was two weeks ago that the light on the south side burnt out. So now we're going to be turning the clocks back on Sunday, and the lighting and the tree limbs over there are just not conducive to what's going to happen on Tuesday. Thank you all very much."
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any other public comments? Tim?
Good evening. Jim Saban, South Yarmouth, no, I'm not South Yarmouth anymore, I'm in Yarmouthport. Not here to represent any of the boards or committees yet. It's not just a boardwalk. Over 200 people filled out on social media that they did not like the name Parker's River Boardwalk Park. Over 200 people suggested that you name it Parker's River Landing. It's not just a boardwalk. We can change our town label, our town seal. You can re-correct yourselves and come up with a new name, Parker's River Landing, which seems to be what most people except your friends like. So I didn't get a response the last time I asked you to discuss it. You just blew me off. Please don't blow me off. Put it on your agenda, have a discussion about it. Otherwise, we'll just bring a petition to town meeting and we'll discuss it there. But I think the committee deserves the decency of, you asked us to do something, you asked us to listen to our community, to seek input, and then you ignored it. You did whatever you wanted. We gave you four names, and you out of whole cloth created your own that most people in town ignore. So I'd ask you to reconsider that and to think of that. That's my Jim Saban by himself comments. The other is with regards to the planning board. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, every letter, every note that came to the town for the Board of Selectmen was put in their packet for them to read. The entire planning board sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen dated October 17th, and for whatever reason, either through the town administrator, the chairman of the board, whoever, has decided not to put this letter in the packet for the public to see. So, dear Board of Selectmen, excuse me, dear Select Board members, we are excited that the vital work of the Matiche's Utilization Committee will begin this month. The Matiche's property is the largest parcel, the largest Yarmouth parcel to be considered for redevelopment in decades. However, we are writing to express our concern that you chose not to appoint a planning board member to the MUC. At your September 17th meeting, you chose five at-large members and an alternate from the community, plus a single appointee from the Finance Committee and the Capital Budget Committee. Two planning board members submitted applications for the MUC over the summer. Neither was chosen at your September 17th meeting, which we believe was an oversight. The charge for the MUC states, "Create an effective reuse plan in a manner that considers multiple alternatives towards achieving a proposal for reuse of the site. The selectman-appointed study committee shall take specific steps, such as those outlined by the scope of work, to ensure inclusion of many interests in the property in an impartial manner, and combine that input with technical support, planning board, to determine alternative scenarios that will contribute to, but not be limited to, one or many of the following areas: economic, cultural, recreational, tourism, social, housing, parks, community centers, or educational development for the town of Yarmouth. The planning board members are uniquely qualified to serve in the MUC, and the community would benefit from having the expertise of a planning board member. In addition to reviewing plans, project subdivisions, and zoning bylaws, planning board members are also responsible for preparing the local comprehensive plan, local comprehensive plan, our long-term master plan. In addition to the crucial work planning board members serve on numerous town committees involving community planning, they serve on the Capital Budget Committee, the Community and Economic Development Committee, which is also not on this, by the way, the Community Housing Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, Design Review Committee, Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, Land Disposition Committee, Water Resources Advisory Committee, Open Space and Recreation Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. Therefore, in your continuing interest to plan for the future of the town of Yarmouth, we ask that you add the following to your October 29th meeting agenda. And this is why I'm doing this, because this was sent to you, and for some reason, you elected not to put this on your agenda. We ask that you modify the MUC charge to increase the MUC to a nine-member committee, and B, to include one planning board member, to appoint one planning board member to the MUC, sincerely, every single member of the planning board. I don't know why it didn't get in your packet, but I think the public needs to know that for some reason, you have decided not to include the key planning agency in this town in the most major planning project we will do. It makes absolutely zero sense. I don't know how you came up with it, but I think you need to reconsider it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other public comments today?
Hi, my name is Sarah Arhern. I live at 152 Route 6A in Yarmouthport. And I just wanted to speak tonight on the agenda item regarding the village design project. I first want to start by thanking Kathy, the town planner. She's been doing an amazing job, and I especially want to thank her for keeping us all in the neighborhood very well informed. My husband and I have attended multiple meetings since 2022, when we moved into town, and we've been following the conversation. There have been some spirited discussions and differing opinions on what it should look like, but consensus is developing that something needs to happen. Whether it's from the aesthetics and the preservation of a beautiful neighborhood, or economics and enhanced access for local businesses, or just plain safety, slowing down cars driving through on 6A, preventing the illegal U-turns that we see happening all the time, improving line of sight from parking areas onto the street, all while maintaining access to emergency vehicles, these are some of the conversations that are happening. So I'm really hopeful that this can continue forward, both tonight and later at town meeting in the planning and design stages, because it would make a meaningful improvement to the village of Yarmouthport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I see Vida has her hand up. Vida, can you hear me?
Am I still on or do I have to unmute myself?
You're on, you're on.
Okay, all right. So I found this to be a very sad occasion when we are about to bury, I guess, the rather beautiful town seal that we had for so many years, and replace it with something that shows us a perfect generic Christmas tree, totally devout of any kind of meaning or historical meaning or anything like that. And when the town, when the committee, the town seal committee, you know, kept badgering Mr. Whedon, David Whedon, to make his comments on the proposed town seal, the change in it. And when he replied that he did not like what was going on, especially in losing the Native American image on it and several other things, the committee chose to go back and find another person to see if that person would come back with more positive comments on what was going on. Now, at one point, during the committee considerations, it was pointed out that the redesigner of the seal was proposing this Christmas tree image, and the committee asked him to work on it a little bit. And when he came back, he had chopped off some of the bottom branches to make the tree look a little more like a pine rather than a spruce or something like that. But unfortunately, from what I've been seeing in the seals that have already been replaced in around the town hall or what have you, he put those branches right back. So we have ended up with a totally meaningless, generic Christmas tree, lacking only the ornaments. I'm very, very sad, and very sad for Mr. Whedon and that, you know, his comments weren't taken into consideration when this whole thing was voted on. Vida does it may.
Thank you, Vida. I also see that Joe Glenn has his hand up. Joe, can you hear me?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can indeed.
Thank you, Joe Glenn, Precinct 6. In the interest of trying to make it one full meeting after I promised not to be critical, I don't think I meant that I would never be critical, but that I would always try to be cordial. So in that interest, I'm going to comment on your warrant article on the special election. But I'm doing it in a very reserved manner because my passions, as you probably know, are much more deeper than I'm going to project here. You just heard the town clerk talk about 8,000 people that have already going to be voting, as opposed to what people will show up on Election Day. I would presume that that is going to be more than the amount of people who show up on Election Day. It would be great if it was equal or more on Election Day, because that would be a good turnout for us, a very good turnout for us. But unfortunately, that special election is going to be more than the exact opposite, you know, our...
Where perhaps it's an app or an audio where people can go to different places throughout our community and really get a historic tour. And to me, this is, this might be the pinnacle of something like that. So we are very rich in history, not only with our Revolutionary War, but a lot of different items. And to me, this is just a significant piece of that, and I'd love to see it happen. Thank you.
I also think we're very fortunate to have volunteers such as yourselves that are taking the time and the energy to do all this research, to be able to come to us with these stories. And, you know, I feel like, just give me more. You know, you told me this today, and it's like, what else can you, you know, come on, go on back and research some more. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the third phase?
Okay.
Okay. Yarmouth has many historical sites that remain unrecognized and unmarked. The abundant history of Yarmouth should be shared with residents and tourists and encourage further tourism and interest in the town. The Yarmouth Historical Commission wants to develop and install interpretive educational signage at various sites in town to highlight the historical places and events in Yarmouth. These signs will provide context and noteworthy facts to enhance the experience for residents and tourists visiting these places. There are over 30 signage locations proposed, and others that are appropriate will be considered by the commission. This proposed two-year project includes 18 to 20 interpretive signs. Each one is a three-foot by two-foot, weather-resistant, interpretive sign with a sturdy, powder-coated, double preacher board style metal frame. The two exceptions to this are the captain's houses in Yarmouthport, which is the captain's mile, and the South Yarmouth Friends Village captains. These will be twice as long in a map style. Now, you talk about house tour, we can have QR codes. If we get it right down the road, maybe there could even be a video, an audio tour on, say, the captain's houses and things like that. These signs will be developed and installed as research is completed and provide, to provide the content for the signs. Placement of the signs will be coordinated with the appropriate town department. The commission has met with the CEDC on this project, who voted to award up to $17,000 out of 33,675 towards the project, about 50%. We also have met with the CPC, who is considering our proposal for the balance of the funding. This is the Indy Memorial and the Memorial Drive. You see the preacher board style double pedestal at the park, and this is a design, this would be the model for most of the signs. Other signs could be, on the top, we have the captain's mile. In the lower right, Parker's River. In the middle, Yarmouth Friends. And on the right, Salt Works at Clap's Point on Bass River. That's it.
Mark? Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, we approve the, I'm assuming the 33,000?
It would be nice if you would endorse the 33,600, but approve the 17,000 from the CEDC.
Madam Chair, I move to endorse the 33,675, but approve the $17,000 for the interpretive signage historic sites project as presented tonight.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, let me just acknowledge, we have the community, I think they're folks from the Community Economic Development Committee here, Courtney Butler. I want to acknowledge and thank you for your involvement in this. I also, Jack Duggan, I know is hiding in the back. He likes to hide at these meetings. But Jack, thank you for your work, and Bob, and everyone on your committee, really, thank you all for this outstanding effort. Very much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we heard the call from you specifically at our last meeting, Mr. Forrest, and we were so excited to meet with Bob, and we were just as overwhelmed as all of you were with the amount of information. And to think about the time in our town's history and all the men who went to fight for our country, and also the women who were left behind to keep Yarmouth around and to really hold stable to the ground of our community and keep everything moving. And we were so beyond thrilled to endorse these projects and support them, and we are very excited to look ahead to the next two years as we ramp up for the 250th anniversary of our nation. And... of our nation and to partner with the Historical Commission on events, projects, tours, anything we can do to support this effort. We're incredibly blessed and lucky to have this commission, and we thank Bob and his team for everything that they've done. So, thank you all.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
I also want to mention Karen Green. I think she's with us this evening. You know, the first person after the Board of Selectmen goal-setting session, we had such an expansive discussion on the historical resources of our community. So thanks, Karen, for helping bring that forward, too.
There's the man of the hour, Jack Duggan.
I'm not the man of the hour by any stretch, but I couldn't sit in the back and say nothing, right, Karen? But I'll offer you a suggestion in good nature, voluntary homework. If you go to the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth and look up "Yarmouth in the Revolution" page, you will see a lot of work that was done by a whole group of us, and it really fills in gaps that have been missing for years and years, and it corrects misimpressions and things that were just wrong in earlier histories of the town. And if you want to place the start, among those databases and articles, my friend Dorothy Robinson wrote a story about a 19-year-old named Lot Hall, who went off, joined the Navy, served, not really clear whether he was a Marine or Navy officer, served onboard the South Carolina Navy, the Massachusetts Navy, a couple of privateers, taken prisoner twice, exchanged twice, spent time in a Glasgow jail, found his way back to Yarmouth on his own hook via Scotland, the Isle of Man, England, Ireland, three islands in the Caribbean, and made it back to the site of land at Hampton Roads and captured twice. And got exchanged within 10 days, and his story was such that Patrick Henry wanted to see him. And Patrick, he had an audience with Patrick Henry, who gave him a horse and money to get back. And on February 1778, almost two years after he joined the South Carolina Navy, he made it back to Yarmouth. So that's tantalizing. Read it, please. And if Mike Stone were here, he'd really appreciate the fact that Lot Hall read to become a lawyer, went off, moved to Vermont, where he was elected to the state legislature, and then became a justice of the Vermont Supreme Court.
Wow.
So that's the kind of stories. It's not typical because there's so many gaps in what we know. We know the names very well, but we don't know very much about the individuals. So, I sat in the back row, but that's my 10 cents worth.
Thanks.
Some pretty valuable information. Thank you.
The historian me, I have to share one more thing for you guys. The tree in the seal is represented as part of the indigenous creation story. One, which is the significance of it. And two, Lone Tree Creek, okay, is depicted in that tree. And so it was on the original seal. So, those are my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well, thank you all very, oh.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm going to collect that mustard roll, if you don't mind.
You sure we can't keep it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Route 6A Village Center Design. I see Kathy coming up to the table.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Williams, Yarmouth Town Planner, and with me this evening is Steve Rhodes from VHB. We've been working with VHB for the last several years, working on corridor improvements for Route 6A. And we've really been concentrating on the Village Center, which is basically from Gingerbread Lane to east of Minden Lane. We've heard a lot of concerns from residents and business owners with regard to pedestrian safety, both on the sidewalks and the crosswalks, having enough safe on-street parking for the businesses, having safe access out of the driveway and sight distances, drainage and speed reduction. We've basically taken those ideas and developed some concept plans, which you'll be seeing this evening, hopefully to address those functional deficiencies. We've had a lot of meetings on this project over the years. Most recently, we've had two workshops for public input on these more refined concept designs. I think this lady relayed it properly or accurately with regard to, there really wasn't necessarily a lot of consensus. There are some people who feel that the Village Center doesn't really need any improving and that it's fine just the way it is. But I think what we found in the last workshop is the vast majority of people do think improvements need to be made, and they want the town to move forward. You'll find in your packets this evening, there's a bunch of emails from various residents and business owners in support of making improvements to the Route 6A Village Center. As a MassDOT state roadway, we did meet with them and also reviewed the concept designs with them, and they had a few suggestions, which we incorporated into the designs this evening, and Steve will go over in a little bit more detail. But we also discussed the possibility of having this project be part of the State Transportation Improvement Program or as an infill project on the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. We know we have a lot of capital improvement projects coming up in Yarmouth in the near future, so that might be a good way of getting these improvements paid for on a state road using state funding. To keep things going, we have a lot of momentum going right now on the Fall Town Meeting Warrant. We have Article 10 for $110,000 to continue with the design development of the Village Center concept. So we're here this evening to present to the Select Board and get your input on the concept designs, as well as hopefully your support on Article Number 10, and agreement to initiate the project with MassDOT. I'm going to hand it over to Steve, who's going to give the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Kathy. So just to situate us, we're talking about the 6A stretch between Minden Lane on the east and North Sandyside Lane on the west. Our limits have about stayed the same since we started the latest iterations of this concept plan development in the summer of 2023. We've taken some input from some abutters to extend out a little bit to Gingerbread Lane, but we've vastly been looking at the same area since we began this in earnest. So as I mentioned, we started updating the conceptual development design plans in the summer of 2023. That's been ongoing to present. As Kathy mentioned, we've had two rounds of stakeholder input workshops in November of '23 and May of this past year. There's been a lot of ongoing vetting and meetings back and forth between interested parties this whole time. So we've got a lot of good input. And essentially, the improvement plan is ready for the next development step, which could either be a MassDOT TIP-funded project, which would be enabling state and federal funding to support the construction, or a town-funded construction project. I'll refer to these in future slides as a TIP project for a MassDOT-funded option or an access permit project for a town-funded option. Just to recap some of the issues that are out there, break it down to a few buckets. For pedestrians, there's inconsistent undefined pedestrian pathways. There's a lack of kind of modern crosswalk infrastructure throughout the limits of the village. A lot of driveway crossings are a little bit longer than we would prefer to see. We can improve on that. And for vehicles, there's really just kind of an undefined shoulder area where people park today, as you probably know. There's some inconsistent signage that's speaking to parking for a number of driveways. There's lack of sight distance provided for operations, people coming in and out of the driveways. And then operational wise, we know there's some issues with business deliveries, people using the north and south shoulders of the road, and speeds have been a key theme from really the inception of this work. So overall, kind of our overarching objective is to preserve the historic character of the village. We know what a special place that is as we're kind of going about our work designing improvements. We want to look at, again, kind of the buckets of improvements for pedestrians, better definition of the sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, so we're talking about improvements to the north and the south side of 6A for pedestrians, adding and reconstructing crosswalks to kind of bookend the village. So that'll get kind of an ADA-compliant crossing facility and a better kind of visual look to the village as you're coming into it from a kind of gateway perspective. We're going to look at, for vehicles, better defining the parking areas, both with curbing and striping to define parallel parking spaces. We're also going to try to provide some more sight distance. Those kind of bumpouts at the end of the parking stalls will kind of serve to reserve a space for people to have some kind of sight angle to look out of the roadway and see who's coming, so they can safely proceed. We're also going to look at providing a mountable pull-off area on the north side of the road for emergency services to use as they come into and out of the village. And one more thing for pedestrians, streetscape amenities have kind of been on the table as we've developed the plans. So we're thinking about things like historic-style lighting, seating areas that can kind of supplement what's already in place in the village. And drainage kind of came into the picture a little bit more recently, but through our work, kind of bringing MassDOT into the project to talk about the scope of it with them, we've identified some areas we can improve the drainage out there through this project. So brief recap, I'm not going to go through all of these, but in general, I think we found through the workshops that a lot of our objectives are really aligning with what we're hearing from the stakeholders and the public that have attended. There are a few things to kind of key in on. Crosswalk treatments is going to be one thing. I'll show some more information on it later in the slide deck. But there's been a few concerns with flashing beacons to be installed at crosswalks as an option for kind of an enhanced crosswalk visibility mechanism, both of their operation and just kind of their fit in the village. And then initially, there was parking that we looked at on the north side of Route 6A. That kind of swapped out and got replaced with the mountable pull-off area in the more recent iteration of the plans. There are some concerns with that parking on the north side and just how they would operate when people park there and try to look across the road to the various businesses, which tend to be on the south side of the roadway. From MassDOT, they generally are on board with the concepts that we presented to them in September. They made that suggestion to take the parking off of the north side of the road because of the narrow kind of space available there with the roadway existing width. They suggested using a type of curbing that's called a T-100 curb, which is typically used in the center islands of roundabouts, so it's a mountable curb, but it's not quite as steeply sloped as like a granite edging, which could have like a 45-degree angle. So it's not something that's going to be super fun to drive up, but it's doable, so we're hoping to serve two purposes there. They talked about the roadway section with us, which they anticipate being 11-foot travel lane and two-foot shoulder. So we're not talking about expanding the road so wide that we're having bike lanes or separated bike paths or anything like that as part of this. We're kind of just keeping the focus to the vehicle access and operations and the pedestrians. And then we talked about some construction funding options with them, and as Kathy mentioned, this could be either from a statewide level that kind of opens up different funding years to projects all across the state, or from the regional municipal commission planning level for the TIP program. Okay, so high-level view of the improvements. I'll work from the north top side of the image to the bottom. So on the north side of the road, at the top, we're reconstructing the sidewalks mostly along the line they follow today, which tends to hug the right-of-way line on the north side of the road. That enables us to have some space, kind of a variable width space for that mountable pull-off area to the north side of the road. So that's out of the way of the travel lanes that exist today. We're just kind of repurposing the space that's already there. The road itself will be repaved, so we have fresh pavement all the way through the village. On the south side, the bottom of the picture here, we see the parking stalls kind of carved out with some definition on the end and beginning of those stalls, that kind of bookends to the driveways where they need to stop. And we have the sidewalk reconstruction on that side of the road as well for the whole These, coming a little bit closer, so we're on the west side of the project at North Sandyside Lane. The crosswalk you see here across Route 6A is a kind of reconstructed ADA-compliant crosswalk compared to what's there today. So we're rebuilding over that existing location, providing a curb extension to kind of get people to see that this is a kind of pedestrian-focused area and kind of hopefully recognize that as they come into the village and their vehicles. We are proposing edge treatment on the parking side. This could be antique granite curbing that exists out there today that can be repurposed and reinstalled, or sourcing new antique-style curbing to match that look. On the north side of the road, you can see the kind of the gray area between the road and the yellow-colored sidewalk is the paver limits. Stepping into the middle of the village, similar idea north and the south. And then to the east end, we have a new crosswalk just to the left of Minden Lane. This would go in in front of the Lighthouse Keeper's pantry. It would link people across the roadway. And we also have, one of the key focus areas has been improving the driveway situation across Minden Lane. It's really like a long, long stretch of pavement without any definition for where the pedestrian travel path should be with that head-in parking and with people using Minden Lane itself. So one idea here is to restripe parking spaces for those businesses and services and have a surface for the pedestrian travelway that is a different material and color than the parking lot itself. We can also add some striping kind of on the edges of Minden Lane to define that as a no-parking area, just kind of have some separation from the vehicles driving down Minden Lane and the parking area, and just some crosswalk striping to kind of go across the throat of Minden Lane to really just kind of tie everything together. One thing I didn't mention in the prior slides is we are looking at adding the lighting to the project essentially between the two crosswalks. That's to be kind of passed out as we go, but that's our general approach for now. Diving into a few more design details, this is a cross-sectional view of the parking bumpout. So this could be a kind of lined with a zero-reveal curb that can define the kind of the curve of the bulb out there. We can also do a stamped colored asphalt treatment. We initially were thinking of scored concrete, but we got some feedback on that, that that could be a little bit too noisy, and there's a stamped asphalt that won't make a sound louder than pavement being driven over that can define the no-parking area. On the north side of the road, this is a section view of what the T-100 curbing would look like, so that supports, that kind of creates the breakpoint between the shoulder of the roadway and the mountable side. So those concrete pavers could be filled in with grass, so it's not going to be quite the, you know, hardscape look between the roadway and the sidewalk, but still support vehicles driving on top of them and not cause a maintenance issue. This is a flashing beacon. You may be familiar with these. They're all-arounds now. This model that we would propose would be a push-button-activated beacon, so we wouldn't rely on any kind of auto-detection technology. It would just be called when people are at the crosswalk looking to go across at the time. There's going to be a similar instance of this installed on a project that my company designs in Brewster up on 6A on Millstone Road, so that's coming soon as well to the corridor. Some lighting samples, and the key takeaway here is that we just want to match the kind of historic feel of the village with the whatever lighting we do go forward with, with our many options. And then coming down to the sidewalk treatment, we could go with anything from brick to brick accents to concrete to asphalt as needed. One example, this is Route 28 in Dennisport. This is a recently constructed MassDOT project. So this is illustrating how the brick sidewalk kind of marries in with curbing, the cement concrete, ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps, and stamped asphalt, sorry, yeah, stamped asphalt crosswalks, which is something we're considering for the crosswalk treatment, which we'll see in the next few slides. So we're jumping down on the ground now. This is at North Sandyside Lane, looking to the east. This is a simulation showing what one option of the improvements could be. On the left, we have the lighting and the grass strip between the road and the sidewalk. We are just showing a sidewalk material here. There's been no choices made, so this would be what a concrete sidewalk would look like on both sides of the road. The crosswalk itself is that stamped asphalt, that red color that's bordered by the white stripe lines to kind of make that pop a bit. This crosswalk option is supported by standard crosswalk signage, so that's just the person symbol with the arrow down, and then the reconstructed sidewalk and the parking area on the right. I think this is a good image to kind of show what it could be after this project is implemented. This just swaps in the flashing beacon, what the signage would look like for that, so it's a little bit more robust. The flashers are between the person sign and the arrow, so they're at a good height that's visible to drivers and trucks. And then going into the air, this is at the Minden Lane end. Here we have, let's see, on the Here we have, let's see, on the left side, the north side of the road, we have a brick side, what a brick sidewalk could look like, kind of meshed in with that cement concrete crosswalk and ADA ramp, the stamped asphalt crosswalk itself across Route six A. The parking lanes are in the right side of the image and how those would fit in with the existing footprint of the road. The cross, crossing between the driveways to Minden Lane to the other side of the driveways. One option we're talking about with Mass D O T is we could do a colored concrete here. So it would have, could have a red color to match brick if brick is chosen for the improvements throughout the village. And that would really help to kind of make a distinct path where people know as they're driving in and out, okay, this is where people may be and gives people who are walking a clear idea of where they should be trying to, you know, get to. You can also see some of the lighting here. It's a little bit small to scale, but there's lighting near the crosswalk area to help define that. Project costs. The project costs would, construction costs would not differ between whether the state funded the construction or whether the town funded it. Right now it's coming in at about 2.7 million at today's market pricing. This includes everything that we saw on the prior slides. So that's, was a recap, the roadway reconstruction itself, pavement, creation of new parking areas, sidewalk construction on both sides, the lighting, crosswalk and drainage improvements. For design cost coverage, for a tip project, the state may elect to cover design costs after certain milestones are reached. And that could be the pre 25% level or the 25% submission. So it's a few different stages there that they could determine they, they may be willing to take on the costs, remaining costs of the design. For a permit project, the town would be funding all of the design costs from start to finish. For utility relocations for a tip project, the state would cover any relocations. The state would likely have a slightly more robust plan to relocate utilities. They like to try to align poles and guy wires on property lines just to standardize things. So for an access permit project, if the town elected to proceed with the funding, those relocations can be minimized, but the town would still be on the hook for any required utility relocations that come up. So next steps for our tip project, the major tasks coming up are kind of broken into three things. And this is the topic of the town meeting Warren article. So it's a supplemental survey to get more survey backups that we could proceed with right of way for easement acquisition. Scoping meeting of Mass D O T, which defines, gets a lot more people from Mass D O T, including the Boston headquarters office in the room to look at the project. So it's District five and its headquarters, talking about everything we've talked about to date for the project scope and kind of, and what are the elements that are going to go into the pre 25% design submission and what's going to go into the 25% design submission. So we have a big meeting preparation for that that's included next. And then the pre 25% design submission is another kind of plan level submission. It's not the first, what we call full submission, which would have plan estimate and right of way plans going to Mass D O T, but that's another step that Mass D O T has implemented recently in order to have less surprises once you get to that full 25% submission. The schedule for that, we're anticipating with a successful town meeting vote to approve this next step of funding could be summer of 2025 that we make that pre 25% design submission. Scheduled beyond that, it's a long-term project. It's dependent on the construction funding that the state is able to find for it. There may be windows, I think Kathy's noted that it could slip into some funding gaps or some available funding on the regional level. Sometimes projects move, projects often, often move. So there's opportunities there. So after Mass D O T reviews the project's eligibility for state and federal funding, then it would be eligible to have a place on that kind of fund, a funding year essentially. But before we get to that bid year, we have to get through all this design process. So there'll be at least four design submissions before you get to the bidding process. For a tip project, the, the safest estimate is that would take about five, five years. For right of way, the acquisition would be all performed by the state. So there's no town, town cost there. For a permit project, the next major design task would be the 25% design. So you take all that kind of buildup tasks out of the tip project procedure and go right into a design submission. That could potentially be in sometime in 2026. That's dependent on the contract funding. We'd have to kind of take a look at what we have that's necessary to go to a full design submission. We haven't done that quite yet. Construction funding by the town, probably good estimate would be a, be a three-year process to get through the Mass D O T review procedure. It is Mass D O T's roadway, so they do still own reviews on that roadway, even if the town is funding the construction. So we have to go through a similar submission track with at least four submissions to get through before it's ready for a bidding. And then, as I mentioned, on the right of way side, for permanent and temporary easement acquisition, the town would be the ones responsible for that task. Okay. That was a lot of info all at once, but we're happy to take questions.
Mark?
Thank you. And I want to thank you both for the amount of time and energy that you've put into this. As you know, this particular work requires a lot of public input, public involvement, and we've had a lot of public meetings on it. So I want to thank you for all the time and energy that you've spent engaging in the community. My big question here is with Mass D O T, of the work that's been presented to here, I mean, I mean, drawings look very nice, very attractive, but I know in other instances, you know, like in Barnstable Village, for example, I mean, they've, they've spent a lot of time and energy making improvements there, but they made the decision that they were going to take over that section of road because of some lack of, I don't want to say support, but clearly the community in Mass D O T had different ideas on the acceptability of the improvements. And so that's kind of my, my, my question tonight is to what degree are the improvements that are being discussed and presented tonight, are they likely to meet with the support of D O T? Because others have told me, at least in, you know, based on the experience in Barnstable, that it may be better for us just to grab that section of the road and then, you know, make the improvements that make the most sense for our community and the people that live in Yarmouth Port.
So, so far, Mass D O T is on board with everything that's presented on these, these plans tonight.
I think the difference in the Barnstable Village is they wanted to have those elevated crosswalks, and that's something that Mass D O T will not do on their roadways. So, but as far as all the other designs, as Steve showed in the picture, they're doing it in, in Dennisport, a lot of the things that we would be wanting to do here and, and doing it in Brewster with regard to the, to the push button flashing beacon. So a lot of these things are already being incorporated into Mass D O T projects throughout the Cape.
Well, that's good news. That's good to hear because I, I know there's been some skepticism regarding this, so I'm pleased to hear that. With respect to the funding on the tip, there's just so much demand for that kind of funding. I think, you know, as someone who serves on the MPO.
You're right.
There could be a slippage in a project and there could be something that falls through the cracks, but I think that's, that's a real risky way to go. I think we need to, you know, I, I would say that, you know, we need to look at to what degree we can be able to step up and carry this project through. If we wait for the tip, it could be a long, long time.
I think one of the things when we met with Mass D O T, Rich Bilski was there. He's a Yarmouth resident and is very supportive of the project. And he mentioned that there may be state funding specifically for village center improvements, and there was going to be some investigation into the possibility of a STIP versus a regional tip.
Yeah, I think, I, and I would encourage that. I, I, between, you know, mass works and some of the other economic development, I mean, there's going to be an economic development bill that comes through that's targeted with economic revitalization. So I mean, I think there are other potential opportunities that we can certainly look at and explore. You know, the, the notion that public works plays a key role in economic revitalization, I think is, is always been understood, but I think from everything that we're hearing from the legislative leadership, there's, there's only, there's a pretty full commitment to getting an economic development bill through that will have funds for public works related improvements. So we definitely want to keep our eyes on that. So those are my questions, but I like what I've seen and I'm, I'm interested in hearing. I don't know if we're going to get that opportunity tonight, Madam Chair, but I'm interested in hearing what residents, particularly folks in Yarmouth Port have to say about, I've seen the letters, I've seen the emails, so it sounds like there's a great deal of support. So, you know, I think if there's an opportunity here from the public, that would be great.
Tracy?
Yes, thank you very much for all your work on this. I know, I think it was probably one of Bob's first meetings that he sent.
That's right.
At the fire station when we first started talking about this probably two or so years ago. You talked a lot about, you know, what the issues there and the consensus, but what's left on the table in terms of where we don't have consensus?
I think it varies between some people who honestly feel that the village center is fine the way it is and it doesn't really need to be a lot of improvements and that maybe this is, proposes too much versus those people who feel that these improvements are solving those functional issues and want the town to move forward.
Okay. I, I get concerned with, you know, anytime you have, I'm, I'm not sure what the width of the road is here, but you know, when you have the granite curbing on both sides like that and you know, you have emergency vehicles where we have the fire station fairly close to there, there's nowhere for people to pull off.
I think that's the idea on the north side of having that mountable curb and then the pay, the grass pavers allow for vehicles to mount. It's not comfortable, so we don't want people to consistently do it and park there, but if you need to get out of the way and if you have a delivery, you can get out of the way and kind of park there and make.
That's adequate on one side, you think? Okay.
It's a relatively short section, so I think if people hear sirens, they can probably move through the short section of the village and get out of, out of the way on the, on the south side.
Well, I hope so, but I watched what happened off of the rotary in Hyannis heading towards the hospital. When they put granite on both sides, there were nowhere for the emergency vehicles to go. It was, it's not a great situation. And then the truck turning for deliveries. You know, that's on one side of the road, so I suppose, I mean, you know, with grass, I, I, I don't know, I don't know.
There's no way.
Now there's more of a turning radius allowed. I just get concerned with that. I'm surprised to see on-road parking in here because I, we were told many, many meetings ago in 2022 that the state doesn't allow on-road parking. That's why they were cracking down on certain people. And yet now we have on-road parking for a few businesses. So I, you know, I, it's either one or the other. That's my opinion. I mean, you can't tell a business, you're telling businesses we're taking away their parking, but then we allow it for a few. So having said that, you talked about, you talked about land takings. How much, how much are you anticipating this impacting people's property?
Not all that significantly. That was one of the things that we thought about. Yeah. If you look to the left of Lighthouse Keepers, you'll see that there's some expansion of a permanent easement or maybe even a small taking for the sidewalk there so that we can add those extra two parking spaces on the road. Cause the whole idea was the businesses do need this on-street parking. We've been told they need, they need it, but we wanted to make it safer. So there would be some, a permanent easement there. And then there'll probably be a strip of temporary easement all along. It's because there's, you can't construct a sidewalk right to the edge of a property line without stepping onto someone else's property. So there'll probably be a strip there. But we originally, when we were looking at parking on the north side, it was really going to take some property there and there were some concerns because there's a nice hedge there and that they probably would not be amenable to it. I think the people on the south side are more, have expressed more interest. I believe Greg Bilzikian recently purchased, if you go back, and he's here this evening, the Voila Designs. I believe he recently purchased that building and that parking obviously would benefit his life's house, Keeper's Pantry. There's a lot of functional issues in the village. We're not solving all of them perfectly because we simply can't within the limitations and the constraints of a historic village. So you, you're absolutely right. There's going to be some things.
I understand that. I just think that it's bizarre to me that you would find a few spaces, you know what I mean? When we're told from the beginning that there's no parking on a state highway. I just, I just find it interesting.
They changed some of their opinions?
I'm trying to think back. How many years ago was that, that you were told that?
Well, I think we started this, they started ticketing people about two years ago.
Okay.
That was the town ticketing them, I believe, because people were parking on the sidewalks was the issue, was my understanding.
Well, it's, it's neither here nor there, but the, the, I mean, in terms of, in terms of history, when we had a long history of, of parking in a particular place, the argument from the town was there's no parking on a state highway. And now we're parking on a state highway. I understand we're making parking spaces, but you know, if we're going to make parking spaces, I don't, I mean, we could possibly work to define more, but. So the land impact and in, in, who gets to make the final determinations about the finishes? The crosswalk type, the lighting? And is there any data that talks about which one of those has the best success, not only for safety, but for speed mitigation? Cause I think that that's one of the big things is, you know, is trying to get a there there where people feel like they want to slow down. And I'm not sure, it would seem to me that the, the red crosswalk might have a better effect on slowing people down than the white, but I don't, I don't know if there's data to that.
There's any data with regard to that, but I, I would agree with you that I think having the red stripe across is very visually impactful to, to someone driving, especially there are other crosswalks. So if it's just like something that you're doing in the village center or key, key locations, it really does draw people's attention to it. I find as a driver that it draws my attention to it, as well as the bump outs, the kind of narrowing it. There have been some discussions with Mass D O T about reducing the, the speed limit within the village, and they're basically indicated that that's something that would be considered as part of physical improvements, like the ones that we're proposing.
And decision wise, I think Mass D O T would still retain final decision on either project track, tip or permit, but they're very interested in partnering with the town on this from all the discussions we've had to date.
That was my impression in the meeting that we had. They were even making some suggestions about the brick and even the crosswalk epoxy coated. Yeah. The, the brick crosswalks are typically stamped concrete, correct? Cause I guess what my concern is, and I've seen it recently, and we've actually seen it right out here at Town Hall, the, the pavement, you know, with the frost, keeping the bricks, you know, after the winter all aligned so they're not a tripping hazard is something I'm also very worried.
So this application is asphalt treatment. So it's one kind of homogeneous surface that the road is paved on and then this treatment goes on top of it, just a thin stamp into the hot asphalt. So it's not a real concern with.
And with the sidewalks, they're actually not just installing the bricks on a sand bed, they're now being installed on top of a concrete slab. So there's not that movement that you see with, like in Beacon Hill with all of the, of the bricks going up and down. So it would be flat and, and obviously handicap accessible.
And I know we've, we've talked and we've kind of went back and forth about Mark's point about what, what happened with Barnstable. I, I think, you know, we don't have any. Well, so the project's $2.7 million, whether the state does it or the town does it, right? But we don't have any, the thing with Barnstable is they took it over, they're responsible for it from now on. And I'd like to know what that cost would be to Yarmouth. I don't know what that is. And I'm also interested in whether or not there's other construction projects, water. I know at one point in time they were talking about a water main being replaced, which would, would be a significant savings on paving if we partnered with them.
So that project is happening, we're, we're designing that as well. That's at a 75% design stage right now. So that'll be happening before any of this. They, D O T is requesting that we repave the full width of the roadway. So it's possible, depending on the timing of how everything plays out, that the pavement itself will be in a good enough condition to keep, but the paving for the parking lanes will definitely have to be new pavement just because of the grading. The slopes of the road today will need to be modified a bit to kind of get everything put back in. So we'll still have to do some component of new pavement construction after the water line is in.
They just kept overlaying and overlaying and overlaying the roadway. So that's why the sidewalk, then you barely see the antique curb anymore, and then you see the pavement from the roadway. We need to do some changes in order to kind of get that reveal back. So there will be some changes to, to the grade a little bit within the section.
And there's no way that we could partner with that. Your $2.7 million takes into effect that that new paving is there, because once that new paving is there, we're not allowed to touch it for five years.
So Mass D O T would essentially break their own rule and repave the road as part of the project if it was determined that, okay, yes, the waterline project went in, say in 2025, but this project came in in 2028, they would still, they could still justify to themselves spending the, the funding if it were a tip project on repaving. You may get some relief if it's an access permit project to save some costs there.
The majority of the project probably is the paving. So what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is if the town came up with, you know, what portion of that it is. So if the town came up with the, the other part of it, how much money we could save if we partnered and did one, did it at one time? Because the state would save, I mean, why would the state want to? Because the state would save, I mean, why would the state want to pave it twice and break their own rule? I mean, that's a huge amount of money.
So just some numbers on the cost. The paving for this project limit for the parking and for the just refreshing the road surface is about $137, $138,000 of the $2.7 million. The sidewalk cost is about $500,000, so there's a huge cost in reconstructing sidewalks. Granite curbing is going to be about $108,000. Drainage will be $270,000. Lighting could be up to $400,000.
I, I've seen parking lots that cost $138,000 to pave, so I don't, not really sure where they're getting that number from, but, okay. How far are they paving? Are they paving the whole from Minden to Gingerbread? Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Joyce? Sir, I'll come to you in just a moment.
There's a cost breakdown in your packet as well.
Thank you. An impressive and ambitious plan. I just have two questions. One, I kept seeing drainage and drainage improvement at the bottom of the descriptions. What exactly is the stormwater situation there right now?
Again, because they've just been overlaying and they've kind of basically gotten rid of the curb where the water would run and then go into the catch basins, they're missing a lot of that gutter where the water would run. So we're modifying that a little bit and then adding additional catch basins in certain key areas and then tying it back into the existing drainage system on Route 6A.
Okay. And so it's not that, it's not an alarming need right now, but, but with the rearrangement of many factors, it, it will have to be done.
I think it, based on what we heard from, from some of the people at the workshop, where we had workshop a couple of days after a major rainstorm, there was some serious drainage issues because the road, you know, it's not being caught in the catch basins as it should be, so it's running off into people's property. So it is, it is a bit of a concern.
Because I'm aware some of the smaller historic houses don't have cellars, so they would notice very fast. The other question is a really short one. It looks to me like if you get all the approvals and everything marches in time, that this would be finished around 2032. Is that about right?
I think about 2030 could be the, the tip project timeline to bidding. This project wouldn't take too long to construct, so it could probably be constructed within a year and a half or so, I would say. Probably like three construction seasons, fall, spring, fall type, type window. No work in the summer, just kind of breaking and doing the work in the fall and spring seasons. Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, if, if the tip path were pursued, you know, we've been talking, we're going to construction, submitting, requesting bids from contractors around 20, 2030, and then construction, sorry now for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I invite the public for any comments, sir? If you could identify yourself for us, please.
My name's Charles Clark, owner of Hallett Store. I've been part of this project since 1998, when they first tried to do the similar things. And we overturned a lot of what they wanted to do and make it modern. I have a lot of the people come in and we just had a big conversation on how historic we want to keep the village. This would not keep it historic. The people are adamant, they didn't want much change to the road. We do want to improve the sidewalks. Now, when you say how wide the road is, I talk to engineers that've come in the store, and of course, they say in some sections, the road is 80 feet wide, and others, you're lucky if you have 40. And the question is, it's like putting a square peg in a round hole of building this project, because nothing is uniformed. They're playing with trying to make things fit, and I proposed a lot of good ideas that seems like they just keep getting slipped by the things. If you could pull up the slide where you have the crosswalk in front of Hallett's? Okay. Now, this crosswalk affects the Golden Jalapeno and, and the area in my store, and we're talking about parking, and of course, it's going to tie up more parking that is crucially needed, and it interferes with Sandy Side coming in and out. Now, I propose if they move this 400 yards down the road in front of the bank and in front of the new doctor's office in a central location, it makes a better fit. You can see it better. It has more visuality, and if you're going to have people unloading from like the Christmas stroll or anything, they're going to have an area that they're going to have to park cars and get on a trolley, or pick up a ride to go to the doctor's office and back. I find that this crosswalk is not used as much as people think it is. A lot of people do walk the area, and they do do it, but it's visually unseen, and you, and you would have a much visual picture if it was in front of the bank and that. And if you look at the platform around the areas, there's much more grass, there's much more even areas, and this would make a better fit. And everybody I talked to says, that's a great idea, but I still see we got it in front of the store. And this would help the village in the respect of just gaining one more parking spot that we crucially need. Now, I also proposed that we put in a community parking area, and that was proposed, and the whole idea is if you relieve the cars off of 6A, if it's crucial, you're going to have better flow. And the proposal, they're going to spend $2.7 million. I was saying that if there's some way we could take over Ina Hose parking lot, connect it with Jack's Outback, put one way in, one way out, make it a community center. We have areas all over the Cape that do this, Province Town, Centerville, of course, everything. Yarmouth doesn't mess with any community parking facility, and it would make a great village community because the houses now have more cars in it because the houses have expanded, and they used to have maybe one or maybe two cars, they have four and five cars. So when they can't park in their own parking spot, they park in the, the road where people need for businesses. The section where the town crier is, is, has a proposal right now on the books for sale, and I think the town should make an offer on that property because that would be a great start to an entranceway for a community project to connect it in a host parking lot. Eventually, Ina Hose may sell, or they might come to a conclusion, they don't use the parking lot from probably seven in the morning until four in the afternoon. And if you gave them some proposal, they might jump at the chance because it would make more sense to take the cars off the road, and it would help traffic flow. You know? We now have the neurology center and the doctor's office. They have 40 employees that drive cars. That's a lot of cars, plus the patients now. So when you look at that parking lot, that is traffic moving in and out constantly. So the whole idea is the community is going to change in this area. There's no question about it. But if we don't propose it to expand with what's going to happen down the road, your proposals of making better historical travel and making these walking villages, there's no, there's going to be no place for people to park, and the businesses will eventually die and not function, and they're going to close because they can't attract more business. You know? We, we all know that, that this historical road, you know, the Old King's Highway is, has a great significance for attraction, but if we make it too modern, they're going to hate it. They're not going to look at it as like it's an old quaint village road. They're going to look at it as now it's modern, and it doesn't match the old historic pictures I have. So there are great proposals that we could do. I also proposed that instead of putting up a no parking sign, we put up a granite hitching post or a steel cast iron column with a ring on it. Therefore, they can't park there. It serves the same function, then a big gaping sign that's slapping in the breeze saying, you can't park here and being, you know, find someplace else to park. Because we now need to enhance the, the village for what businesses need. And, you know, my mind is, if you want to, you know, put the red markings on the crosswalks and enhance it, of course, they got to meet the requirements, you're going to spend a lot of money on a crosswalk. You want to put it in a big place that makes sense where a lot of people are going to access it. Nobody's accessing that, and you're going to spend a lot of money on it. You know? I'm not saying it's not used, but when you look at all day long, you got a little bit in, early in the morning and four in the afternoon, because there's no reason to cross there. You know? And that's what I'm trying to say is if, if, if you have it in an area where they can park a car and cross the road, they're going to do it. You know? But they aren't doing it there. Now, you know, I proposed an amendment, I'll, to move it to the, in front of the, the doctor's office and the bank. It's up to you to accept that this is a, a great location, but I, you know, I've run the store for many, many years, and I, I find out just simple changes work in such great ways. And, and that's what I think you'll, you'll find is that people, people don't understand the parking signs they get up. And the question is, because it says two hour parking and no parking on that side, but it's on the wrong side of the road. So every time they come in, they have to question me, can I park out here? And I have to answer the question, yes, you can. You know? So I'm going, and of course, the more signs you have, it just doesn't look attractive for the, for the, for the neighborhoods. So that's, that's one of my proposals. The other thing is the curb cuts they want to do on this side of the road, they can do a lean curb. They've done it on the highways when you go on the on-ramps and everything, and that lean curb could be recessed into the road, and it allows a kid on a scooter to jump it if he has to get off the, the main road. It allows those people on those big wheel bikes that are electric now that are very popular to get off the road. But if you put a six inch curb in, you ain't going to escape anybody. You're going to take a header. And I've known from this type of work, because I used to do construction work, I worked for companies, I put in places like this, and I used to advise people on what works and doesn't work. And of course, I've submitted, you know, pretty insignificant renderings to the, to the committees, but it seems like they look at it as like not. And of course, I was pretty much the design on what happened down at Dennis Pond, and of course, I protected the historical significance of Old Tyneus Road. And of course, I've had different parts when we overturned the first time they tried to make this a superhighway, because I have all the paperwork from it, and I have the original documents back in 1895 when they first started the road, because that was Andrew Hallett. So it's good that we're moving forward with this, but if you limit what we're doing with it, I think we can make the project move a lot faster, maybe cut some of the cost because people are not going to like the flowery sidewalks, because in my mind, it doesn't match anything that I see that's historic. It's somewhere else. They wanted to put a clock in front of my store, and I go, what significance does the clock have? That was in Bath, Maine, because there's a Hallett store in Bath, Maine. And I don't know who came up with the principle of putting a clock there, because there are no clocks in this area. But the road is considered Hallett Street, and we can significantly enhance the road House Street. You want to do Backsters, and you want to do the wharf and the freezer plant, things like that? Why don't we enhance what we know where things are? But that's my proposal. I'll leave you what I suggest at the end of the, of the meeting here. Okay?
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public? Greg?
Yeah, Greg Bilzikian. I now have 169. Route 6A is Lighthouse Keepers Pantry, Just Pick Gifts, and I live on 100 Wharf Lane. And definitely an advocate for all the work that Kathy and VHB have put together. There are always going to be problems. This is a very contentious piece of road. Everyone's got an opinion, but the most important, I'd say, is please move it forward. If it gets stuck again for another 10 years, else it'll be, my grandkids will be riding on the same, you know, sidewalks I grew up with. It's time to move on and modernize. There are historical elements that need to be preserved, but I walk my dog Thatcher right in front of Hallett Store every Saturday morning when I go for a coffee at Lighthouse Keepers Pantry. So if it's this side or that side, I understand it's, it's, it's another point that needs to be considered as decisions are made. And if it's this light or that light, it's going to be lit. And if it's got a crosswalk with a light, it might be safer. These are all really great ideas, but to let it sit for another 10 years and wait to 2030, I have one daughter getting married, so maybe by then. But, you know, would be good to move it, move it forward. I think the Cape Cod Commission might have done an interim study as well that was put down by the local community, but there does seem to be a group of people along with me and my customers that would like to see things be a little safer, a little more straightforward, a little easier to access. So your support is definitely needed in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Do we have anyone else? Okay. Any further comments from any of the selectmen?
No, I make a motion that we approve the concept. You know, I think that it's early, so there's, it's hard to really approve a plan. So first I'd move to recommend Article 10. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And from there, I guess we, you'd need a recommendation on the concept or just the support of the town meeting article or?
The support of the town meeting article, and I guess we're moving forward with having this be a Mass DOT project initiation, and if that's something to get on the stip or the tip, that's part of the process, and that's something that we need to do right away because they have their next meeting on December 12.
So can we make that motion after the town? I mean, it's kind of hard if we don't know if the town's going to approve it. I don't, I don't, if we can't approve the funding, what's the purpose of approve that motion?
We can, we can keep doing things now with Mass DOT to move toward that project review committee, that, that Mass DOT meeting to intake the project. We, we don't need that quite tonight.
As long as you're okay with us doing that, we're, we're, we'll move forward with that.
I mean, if, I just, I have no problem after the town meeting saying that we want to move forward, but if the people of the town don't, we can't get the funding, I'm not sure where, where that leaves us. So as long as you can come back shortly after town meeting, I think that I'd be more comfortable waiting till then.
Okay.
If that, if we have time for it.
And thank you for all your hard work on this. I know there's been an awful lot of community meetings, workshops, discussions.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We have to vote on Article 10. There was a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. Yeah, we did.
I think we did.
Unanimous, yeah.
Good.
No, already did that.
Richard, we took your motion so seriously. We just got on it, you know?
Thank you, kind sir.
Okay. Next up, we have the planning board presentation.
Oh, thank you.
So.
Hi.
Okay. We're going to need to move on. Thank you.
Kathy Williams, town planner.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. I'm Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board. Thank you for this opportunity to review. The Planning Board's proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the 2024 special town meeting on November 19th. As you know, the current members of the Planning Board are Jim Saban, who has joined us this evening as Vice Chair, Will Rubenstein is our clerk, Susan Breda, Ken Smith, Peter Slovac are the other members of our, of our Planning Board, and of course, we are supported by our town planner Kathy Williams. Please note that we have a vacancy and that we are anxious to fill quickly by way of a public service announcement to those who are here or those who are... by way of a public service announcement to those who are here or those who are joining us remotely. If interested, we encourage you to complete the Talent Bank form on the town website to join this really good committee. The Planning Board will be presenting two zoning articles at the special town meeting, one related to affordable housing and the other to seasonal employee housing at hotels and motels. The Planning Board held their formal public hearing on October 2, 2024, with four members of the public attending. There were no oral or written comments with regard to the amendments. The Planning Board held a public meeting on October 16, 2024 to deliberate and vote on the articles. And as outlined in the October 17 memo to the Town Administrator and the Town Moderator included in your packets, the Board voted unanimously to move these two amendments forward. Kathy Williams, our Town Planner, will now walk you through what the bones are of these two amendments, which I might add are relatively minor adjustments.
And I would concur with Joanne as well. They're relatively minor, but they could be impactful. So the first, Article 13, is related to affordable housing. And what, the only thing that we're trying to do is modify the method of calculating the fee to be paid in lieu of creating affordable housing units. We're trying to correlate it more closely with the median home prices rather than median income, and that we feel will be better reflective of what it costs to actually create an affordable unit. So just a little background, our zoning bylaw now requires affordable units when five or more housing units or lots are created. And we have three different ways that you can meet this requirement. You can either create the affordable unit onsite as part of your development, or you can do it offsite if you happen to have some type of housing that you own already that's in good condition, and you want to have that be your affordable unit. And then the third option is via a payment to the Affordable Housing Trust, who uses those funds to help create and to preserve affordable housing units. Allowing this flexibility to meet the affordable housing requirements really helps support all development of housing. We certainly don't want someone to feel as though they're not going to move forward with a great housing project because they find the inclusionary zoning to owners. So these different options provide them with different flexibility. The current formula is tied related to median income, and then there's one fee set for all different types of housing types. So a single-family home, a duplex, or a multifamily unit would all be the same payment in lieu of. So the proposed changes, they really came about because obviously the market conditions have changed quite significantly. The existing formula was developed in 2013, and home prices, as we all know, have been outpacing income. So the new formula calculates basically the difference between the median home prices for our area using current data from the Warren Group and then the price set for an affordable housing unit by the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. The Warren Group is a well-established firm that provides data specifically with regard to median home prices. And obviously, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities helps the towns with affordable housing, and they will calculate that price when requested by communities. There are separate fees that are calculated for single-family homes and for duplexes and multifamily. Obviously, it would cost more to create a single-family home. So if your development is creating single-family homes, you'd be paying a price related to a single-family home. The fee will be calculated annually by July 1 and be fixed for the next 12 months. The Planning Board really wanted to have developers understand these costs during their project development and not having it changing midstream. This just provides you with an example. The existing formula is 125% of the current median income. And in FY '24, that was $122,700. So the cash fee per unit would be about $153,000. With the proposed formula, it's broken down into two separate categories. There's the single family. The median home price in August of 2024 was about $565,000, whereas the affordable price was $280,000. So the cash fee would be about $285,000. With a duplex or multifamily, the median price for condos was $425,000 with an affordable price of $250,000. So that's a cash payment of about $175,000. And you can see that that's quite a bit of a difference from, especially for single-family homes and from the existing formula. I don't know if you want to go through each article separately and then discuss it or to have me go through the entire presentation?
Let's go through the presentation.
The next item is related to seasonal employee housing. And this article would limit hotels and motels located within our HMOD-2 zoning district, which is located along South Shore Drive, to a maximum of 15% of their rooms being used for seasonal employees. There's also some minor modifications to the definitions of transient. So just a little bit of background, the Planning Board fully understands how important temporary seasonal workers are to our tourism economy. And they have included in the zoning bylaw right now that eligible motels and hotels can use up to 15% of their rooms to house seasonal employees or seasonal employees of other Yarmouth businesses from April 1 through October 31. And this is done through an annual permit from the Building Department if they're meeting all the operational standards. And these are specific things, like making sure that they're meeting all state and local codes, that they provided adequate provisions for kitchen facilities, and that there's an onsite proctor. If all of the operational standards can't be met, including they want to exceed the 15% limit, they would need to apply for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's what's kind of on the books right now. And this is just showing people what the HMOD-2 zoning district is like. And you can kind of see, it's all the great hotels along the South Shore Drive. It does include the Skipper Restaurant as well and some smaller residential properties closer to the Red Jacket in the southern, or the left side of the screen. So what are we proposing? It's important to know that these changes were brought as requested by residents of an abutting residential neighborhood to the north who had some concerns about this. And all it does is it just prohibits these motels in the HMOD-2 only from applying to the ZBA to use more than 15% of their rooms. So they wouldn't be eligible for that special permit option. But it does retain their right to seek relief from all the other operational standards. We did investigate all the hotels in the HMOD-2, and only one hotel is even, is using this provision at all, and it's under the 15%. And they could continue to operate this way with these proposed changes. And it also does not impact the hotels and motels along Route 28, which is in the HMOD-1. And there are two hotels on Route 28 that have special permits for 100% usage for seasonal employee housing. And then the last thing is some minor clarifications to the definition of transience, to basically clarify that the limitations on continuous occupancy are at a single hotel or motel property, not a single room within a hotel. So you can't move from room to room within a single hotel. And then just specifically states that the transient definition doesn't apply to these other options of onsite managers at hotels and extended hotels and also seasonal employee housing. Just making that clear. And that's it.
Tracy?
So, thank you very much. The Warren Group, is that a private?
Jim Saban.
Entity? And are other affordable housing bylaws utilizing their data for affordability purposes for municipalities as well?
I'm not sure of the second part of the answer. The Warren Group is a real estate entity that provides data in the real estate industry for things such as median sale price, the sales of properties within your town. It's a real estate journal, basically, that provides significant data that they put out annually for, actually even quarterly and weekly on some stuff. But it's basically based on real estate information.
So the impotence to change it was to get a basis that has a higher number?
It was to be more reflective of the cost of actually creating an affordable unit, because the $151,000.
If I may, it made such logical sense to us that the value of the unit should be based on the asset, not the occupant. In the past, it was based on the income of the occupant. For a developer, it should be based on the asset.
Cost of created.
It just made, and this came to us from, you know, the Community Housing Committee, but it just made a whole lot of sense that it should be based on the asset and not on the occupant.
And how many times has this even been invoked, actually? How many times?
Three times.
Yes.
So the Davenport Project on 6A, they exercise this option.
I just want to make sure it's a, it's a, it's a stable, I mean, that we're utilizing something that's, you know, a stable resource, that's not, you know? I'm not familiar with it. I'm not sure of any other municipalities.
Yeah, the Warren Group has been around for 100 and something years. I mean, they're, they're the benchmark for this type of information in the industry.
I will share with you, Ms. Post, that on the Planning Board, we have real estate professionals, Peter Slovac as well. And all of them have brought that particular experience to us, that the Warren Group is the group that's good to use.
And in the HMOD-2, you said also that there is only one person that has a special permit, that this wouldn't?
No, there's one person who is using it below the 15% and has a permit from the Building Department. No one is using anything beyond the 15%, and they do not have a special permit.
So what is this change going to affect?
The change is going to affect, The Village Green is the motel that they did apply to go beyond the 15% and get 100%. And there was a lot of concerns from the neighbors that this was something that they were going to continue to come ahead of. They basically withdrew it without prejudice because it was going to be voted no.
100%, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
It's not a slight difference. You know, I just, I hate being reactive to a particular, you know, I think we have to be very careful when we're reactive to a particular application. And, you know, in zoning, sometimes when we put it in place, it's hard to envision the possibilities of what can be. But, you know, I have faith in the Board of Appeals to make sure that they go in the spirit of what was intended. So I just, I mean, I'm just curious about that. And then in terms of the transient definition, we went back and forth with that when we originally implemented the transient definition, and we went with the state, it was aligned with the state.
I think it was with regard to the number of days of continuous occupancy. I think this is, it's whether this is a question of interpretation of whether moving from one room to another room within the same hotel property constitutes not continuous occupancy. The whole intent, and always has been, I believe, to be per hotel property. And that's all this is saying, is that it's per hotel property.
I find it interesting, because the sticking piece to the transient piece has always been that they have to prove that they have a residence elsewhere. So, I mean, I think if you stick to that, that, you know, to me, they wouldn't be doing what you're, what you're saying they're doing if they actually had a permanent residence elsewhere. It's something that we need to continue to look at the books and enforce, because, you know, we had a situation many years ago that we don't want to get back to. So, anyway, I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Mark?
I'm fine. I don't have any questions. I'm prepared to vote to recommend.
Okay. And Joyce?
I had one question about the zoning Article 14. Can you amplify a little about the proctor's role in this and what the requirements for the proctor would be?
There's not necessarily a specific outline of it, but for the special permits that have gone through the Zoning Board of Appeals, they've been very clear on what the proctor would do. It's typically that the property manager, and they would have defined codes of conduct that the residents would need to adhere to. There'd be specific quiet hours that they'd have to adhere to. There's things like inspecting the rooms on a weekly basis to make sure people are keeping their rooms properly. So this is them, just a person who's keeping an eye on the residents and making sure everyone is being respectful of the property as well as the neighbors.
Okay, that's helpful. It sounds like something that would be included in a management of an operation, anyway. Okay.
I think we used to call it resident assistance.
All right, great. Yes, yes. Proctor was for exams.
House mother.
Okay, no other?
Madam Chair, could I quickly add a couple of things that, just to touch base on Tracy's comments? Two things. Special permit is allowed for some things, but the 15%, no variance will be allowed. So even the Zoning Board of Appeals can't override the 15%.
In the new, in your proposal?
In the new one.
In the new proposal. The second thing I want to point out is, I was concerned about that. And I did a lot of community outreach, among the other things I've outreach about, and found that there's not a lot of pushback from what we're doing. Actually, there hasn't been any pushback. So in general, the business community seems to be in support of it as well.
Well, I only made the comment because I know when the article first came before the board last time, there were people who wanted more than 15% at that time. And I think it was somewhat of a negotiation to get it passed, to get the 15%. But make no mistake, there's a very big shortage of housing for our workers. So, you know, I mean, it's up to the people, obviously, if they want to change it. But I think that the people recognize that our businesses need places for their employees to live, for us to thrive in the summertime. And, you know, I think holding it to 15% is, like I said, it was a negotiation. Do I think the intent is 100%? Absolutely not. But, you know, I heard the number 25 before, and there were people who had the intent of trying to get a higher number before. So, you know, we'll see what happens.
Economically, I'm not sure that it actually works. I mean, if you can get $250 a night for a hotel room, I don't know what they get anymore, because I don't stay in hotel rooms in town, but I'm sure they're up in that $200 range. Well, if you're taking those units off the line to make them available to employee housing, that's not necessarily a good business decision. So I think economics is going to dictate a little of that. And the other part of it is, we as a community need to make a strong effort to find ways to address the affordable, the housing issue as a whole.
I disagree.
Yeah, this property called the Mattiekey's property, that might be something you might want to talk about. But there are some housing issues that need to be addressed regardless.
If you look at the Pelham, I mean, they built housing. It's almost dormitory housing, and they're charging $200, I think, a week per employee. So it's not economically disadvantaging them at all, plus they're getting an employee. So I don't know if I subscribe to that, because they have to be.
They're not the Red Jacket on the ocean.
Which I'm sure their employees have some money to live, but they just don't have a place. So I just don't want to tie our hands too much, that's all. I would be fine with 25%. Would I be fine with 100%? Probably not. But we're really limiting it by this. But again, I support it, and I hope, you know, it's up to the people of the town.
I entertain a motion on Article 13.
Mark made a motion to support both Articles 13 and 14.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I just assume that we vote to recommend both Article 13 and Article 14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary, you're back up.
Good evening. So again, Mary Maslofsky, Town Clerk. I think the first thing you have on the agenda is the general election for November. Two items that I just failed to comment on when I was up here for public announcements. We're currently at about 31% of our voters that have voted today for cast ballots for that election. Traditionally, we vote anywhere between 75% to 80% in Yarmouth on presidential elections. So that's what we still have coming forward with the remainder of the vote-by-mail and in-person early voting and Election Day facing us. And just so that you folks and the general public have a sense of what that means to my office and my staff, if we take the last two weeks, each member of my staff has averaged anywhere between 20 and 25 overtime hours in an 80-hour pay period. That is, that is in addition to us also hiring anywhere between five to eight election workers to work almost the entire day. So we are supplementing our own staff with election workers on a daily basis to get through vote-by-mail. And we're also, in addition to that, by the time the election happens, which in 1895, it was a special one. that, by the time the election happens, which an election for my office, in my office staff is at least an 18-hour day, all of my employees are in the office by 6:00 AM. I'm there at 5:15. We will be lucky on Tuesday, the 5th, if we leave by midnight. That is the goal, but we'll be lucky if we do. From the beginning of vote by mail through the election, my staff will be working 19 out of 21 days. So they'll have had two Sundays off. And the only reason that that's actually been able to happen is because you folks supported our changing a 20-hour employee to a 40-hour employee in the last year. So we've been able to bring on another full-time employee. So that has essentially allowed us to be, have Sundays off through this general election period and through the September election period as well. So just to put some context in that, for you folks and for the general public, that's what vote by mail has essentially done to our office as far as shifting the burden of in-office work. So we're fortunate that we will be able to advance process a lot of those ballots and be able to get through it. I don't know if you've, we had talked at one point about some of the parking issues for the general election. So just to give you a quick update, we've worked closely with the police department and with basically all of our town departments. The election workers, for the most part, those that can, will be parking over on Old Townhouse at the park. We understand that there isn't anything planned there at this time, so they should be available. We are working to shuttle those employees over to the senior center. That should free up a number of parking spaces for our voters to come in on Election Day. The senior center has also agreed to have their van drivers do scheduled pickups for some of the seniors. So they have some scheduled pickup times and locations. So if any of the seniors want to reach out to the senior center, they may still be able to get that schedule and be included in those pickups. So those are some of the items that we're doing to help mitigate some of the potential parking issues on Election Day. But we're also hoping that with the additional vote by mail and the additional in-person early voting, that we'll be looking at closer to what we saw in 2020, where we had about 40% of vote by mail that voted, plus our in-person, and we had about 30% coming through our polling locations. So we're anxious to see what happens.
What's that number, roughly 30% that you got the last time?
For registered voters, we have 22,554 right at the moment. So let me use my calculator, and I can tell you. It's about 6,700.
5,700 people coming.
6,700.
6,700.
Is about 30% that would go through essentially nine polling locations, nine precincts.
So can I just ask a question about that? Is, do you, I mean, I guess we should encourage people to the extent that they're able to, to vote early as to not impact the space on that day. How do you feel about that?
So I really don't have an opinion either way, to be honest. There are, we have put out so many vote by mail ballots, and in past elections, we've seen people using them as specimens, even here in in-person early voting. People are coming in with their ballots, and we have to spoil them, and then they vote live. So, and they still sign an envelope, and it still becomes an in-person, you know, it becomes an in-person early ballot. It's still an early ballot. We still have to house it, account for it, audit it, ensure that we check it off a list when we open and separate it and process it. So for early ballots, we touch them about 20 times, if it's a mailed ballot. If it's an in-person early ballot, we probably touch it maybe 10, because we don't do the first half of the process in mailing it. Election Day is obviously less work for us. You come, you check in, it's processed through the polls. We simply go through it at the end of the night, sort it, and box it up. It's whatever people are comfortable with doing.
Yeah.
You know, some people are married to coming on Election Day and voting. Where the state of Massachusetts has required that we provide all of these new options for voting, and we're happy to do so. So I did want to just make one other comment. They have also instituted something called an accessible ballot. So much like our military and our overseas voters can vote through, it's now called OmniBallot, it's an online system. So instead of emailing them the ballot, it now goes through a ballot portal. The state uses that same system for accessible ballots. So anyone that is physically incapable of marking a ballot, needs any additional assistance, they can go through that system as well. They go through the state portal to request an accessible ballot, and it is essentially an absentee ballot. They're certifying that they need the accessibility option.
Is that true for town, is that true for town elections, though?
It absolutely is. Yep. We use it for, vote by mail, we use it for, not for vote by mail, we use it for all of our UOCVA ballots, which are available for our military and citizens overseas, so they can use that as well. So I don't know if anybody had any additional questions relative to Tuesday's election before we move forward.
When do you get to start putting the ballots through the machine?
So we have scheduled advanced removal and advanced processing to start on Friday. So we will start opening some precincts Friday. We may or may not deposit them at the tabulator on Friday. It will depend on what the volume looks like. Then we are scheduled to be in here all day Saturday to do the rest. So the goal is to be here all day and night on Saturday until we're done with the advanced processing. So we can only process ballots that were received the day before. So on Saturday, I can advance process any ballots that were received through Friday night. So we would have had to have stamped them in and checked them in.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, I appreciate the work that's going into the planning for this. My observation from the last time we had a major election has been just the traffic management has become a problem. I know we have police having to cover all the polling locations, both inside to provide a security presence, and that's the norm now. But I think in the past, it's been spotty in terms of the traffic management. The last major election we had, it seemed that, you know, we didn't have adequate coverage. And has that been discussed with the police?
Absolutely. So in 2022, partway through the morning of the general, of the midterms, we did have a police officer stationed for traffic in and out of the senior center. We have a traffic officer this time for the election, just to help. It's one driveway in, in and out, so it makes it more difficult. We will have somebody stationed there.
No, there's no question. You need someone literally there at the entrance to help facilitate the flow in and flow out. I think that day that you're talking about, there was a period of time where nobody was there helping facilitate that, and that creates a problem.
Correct. So there was a little bit of a bottleneck at a heavy period, the morning of the general, back in 2022 in November. So once that occurred, what had happened at the time, the police were trying to deal with it with using the traffic officers that were on duty, and we just found we needed to hire an extra detail. So that's going forward.
That's great.
So Chief Lennon, Deputy Chief O'Malley, and Lieutenant Bryant have been fantastic. They've worked with me for over a year on different ideas and items for this. So my main project for Tuesday is really to make sure that our contingency plan is in place. So the political climate is such that I need to plan for disruptions and things of that sort. So-
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that, because, you know, I've always thought of our community as sort of complication-free as a community in terms of dealing with this. But I note from this presentation and prior ones that we have to anticipate complications, and I hope that's not bringing about any undue stress on your office and with staff, but I suspect it probably has.
It is simply another factor that we have to consider. We have been told to plan for disruptions of our day. So that includes the potential that we'll have to move a polling location in the middle of the day because of a circumstance that happens. So, you know, we've certainly worked with the police department to talk through those contingencies, worked with other departments to make sure we have secondary plans in place to be able to move a polling location if we need to, and how to respond in this situation that might happen. So it's certainly disconcerting. It is not the part of my job that I really enjoy doing, because, you know, the fact is the threats are out there. And, you know, we hope it doesn't happen here in Yarmouth. We have no reason to, we haven't had any targeted threats, but there is a general threat out there, so we have been told to prepare for it.
Yeah. Has it had an adverse impact on staff or morale? What's the kind of impact in terms of personnel?
I would say generally across the state it has. Certainly, there has been, I think, in excess of a 50% turnover in election officials across the state of Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts alone? Wow.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a-
So-
That's not a healthy sign, particularly a state like Massachusetts that is somewhat complication-free, so to speak.
So it is, we're seeing more retirements. We're seeing a lot more turnovers. There have been a significant number of clerks that have changed even since 2022. So the state has ramped up their training. We have weekly calls with them. Add to that our, you know, our clerk school in the summer, the majority of us go to to get some of our certifications, plus three conferences a year, and a New England conference that we go to for training.
It's almost like, I feel like, we need to like, plan on like, a retreat or some release at the end of this so that people can kind of chill, relax, and regroup. And, you know, I don't have an answer for that, but I think it's something worth talking about, whether we need to maybe have a special event or appreciation or some kind of recognition some way, because I don't want our election workers to think that they're being taken for granted. I think we recognize that it's increasingly becoming a challenge, and their service means just so much, you know, for our community. And I think if there's some way that we can acknowledge and express some sense of appreciation, and, you know, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but I think that's certainly in order for some consideration, maybe at our next meeting. So I would recommend to you and to the town administrator to talk a little bit about that, because as these elections become a bit more challenging, I think it's incumbent on us to take the extra effort to let people know just how much we appreciate their sacrifice and whatever stress that they may have to deal with. Because there's a, you know, when you say you add up all the hours, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It's, I mean, I'm in and out of town hall all the time, and I'm just amazed at how busy everybody is.
So just for an example, our assistant town clerk in 2022 had $8,000 worth of overtime.
Wow.
In the calendar year.
And that was 2022?
That was 2022.
I hate to think what it's like.
So that was one of the things that prompted the request to increase staff, at least by a half a person. So, you know, we're talking, having, like I said, five to eight election workers in the office every day leading up to the election for close to a month.
Is the state providing the towns any help with all these new initiatives for helping people vote?
So they are, they are providing weekly Zoom calls for training purposes. And then they are unfunded mandates. So we do get funds back.
We do.
But it goes to the general fund. So we'll, at the end of all of this, I will do cost certifications for the Department of Local Mandates to seek the funding back. So things like our, any workers that worked on vote by mail, any workers that worked on in-person early voting, any supplies that we used, we will actually this time also try and receive funding back to reimburse us for the high-speed tabulator.
Yeah.
So, but like I said, all those funds go into the general fund, unlike the original unfunded mandate that we had was a polling hours reimbursement. That polling hours reimbursement was originally set up as a special revenue fund. So those reimbursements go into a special revenue fund that we can use for Election Day expenses. The vote by mail simply goes into the general fund. So the funding there has to continually be appropriated on an annual basis.
I see. So that can become a conversation item during the whole budget process.
Exactly.
I just want to say thank you to you and everybody on your staff, the town clerk's office. You obviously have demonstrated a high degree of professionalism and dedication to this work, and I don't want you to think for a minute that it's taken for granted. We very much appreciate all the work that you do and everybody in the town clerk's office. You all work very, very hard, and we appreciate all your dedication and all your hard work.
Thank you. On behalf of my staff, I will say thank you.
That really goes from all of us. Just one other quick question, Mary. I'm glad to hear there's going to be a police officer assigned at the entrance to the parking lot. What about the overflow parking? Is there any contingency in case it really gets kind of cuckoo? Do you have somebody over there?
If it does, if we find that that overflow parking lot needs to be used, we'll see about having an officer over to help direct traffic there. We're not, we're thinking with the, with the election workers parking over there, that should free up enough spaces to help us out. If the parking lot gets to be a terrible traffic jam, we will pull one of our officers from inside outside to help in the parking lot as well.
Okay.
I honestly think that the police effort in terms of moving the flow of traffic and keeping that going will help a lot.
Oh, absolutely. As Mary was saying, you've been working on this for almost a year? I'm not surprised. Thank you. So moving on then to special election warrant and polling locations?
So special election warrant, I have some good news. The event that was scheduled at Kingsway is no longer scheduled at Kingsway.
Oh, that's good.
So now the only polling location that we have a problem with is the church. Unfortunately, they're having their Christmas bazaar, and we cannot have access to the building for December 7. So I prepared two alternate warrants for your consideration. I would suggest you could either still move Precinct One on a temporary basis to the senior center, which is what I had originally proposed, or you could choose to move it, keep it in Yarmouth Port and move it over to Kingsway. The parking, I think, is better at the senior center, particularly for a local election, where you won't have the volume that you'll have during a presidential general. But that is two offers up for your consideration, and I have warrants accordingly. So if you have any questions or have any discussion about that, I'm happy to entertain it. We know that, you know, we recognize that changing the polling location for Precinct One, it may cause some confusion for people. You know, we, the plan is to have a robust communication plan worked out with our communications department to make sure that we flood all the information so that people know where they need to go and who's moved and who isn't moved, in addition to doing all of the statutory requirements, which is us sending a letter out to the households in Precinct One. So we'll make sure all of that happens immediately after November 5, so that we're not having any confusion before November 5.
The parking situation at Kingsway is kind of limited, though, in what you have available.
It is. But I do think the polling location could still handle it if you wanted to do that. I still think the senior center for a local election is a better option because of the bigger parking lot and more spaces available. Traditionally, we don't have a large turnout for our local elections. This being a special, we may or may not, you know, we'd planned for it accordingly. So we can certainly accommodate Precinct One at that location. We typically, on a state or federal election, set up Precinct A and the subprecinct 8A as a separate entity with a separate tabulator. We don't need to do that for a town election, so we can save space by them just voting in one line and one tabulator. So we can certainly still accommodate the number of precincts.
So what you're looking for us tonight is for us to approve the polling locations for the special election?
So if you look through the letter, there are a couple of motions. I would say on the assignment of polling locations, Item 7, on the findings of fact, you would need to just remove Precinct 7. And on Item 8, you would also need to remove Precinct 7. And then your option is on Item 7 to either, on 7 and 8, to either use Kingsway or the Yarmouth Senior Center as the appropriate location. So that's, like I said, a choice for you folks, what you think would be best at that point. It's unfortunate that we have to move a precinct by- It's unfortunate that we have to move a precinct, but...
Yeah, I'm disappointed. I think it's just, I'm glad that you're not going to put it out before the general because I do believe it's confusing, but it is very confusing for people. So I just think it's unfortunate we didn't know this before we picked the date. I don't know if one is better than the other. I mean, you know, the thought is to always get as many people out. I'm glad you're doing a full day. I was hoping that we were at least going to keep it in the same place. I just, I'm... There's no good answer.
How many voters are there in precinct one, do you know?
Don't have the number in front of me. It is approximately, I would say it's about 2,500 is our number.
2,500?
Mm-hmm.
It's one of the biggest towns.
We average between low two to high two across. We have to be a plus or minus 5% with each precinct, so. And it's one of our large, it's a larger voting precinct, but it's about middle of the road when it comes to number of voters.
Do we have discussion? Anyone have any discussion as to that combining of precinct one and seven at King's Way or separating precinct one over to join the other precincts at the senior center?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the town clerk on this. Which would be easier for you and your staff?
For my staff, it'd be easier to have it at the senior center.
Having both precinct one and seven?
It'd always be best to have everybody, every place. I'd rather not move a precinct if we don't have to. But as far as putting a precinct in a new location, it would be easier at the senior center only because my whole staff will be there all day, and then we only have to worry about the one outlying precinct, which is in its normal location with its normal election workers, so.
I'd also have a concern if you're trying to combine one and seven at King's Way with that parking situation, because it is difficult. Do I have a motion? So we would have to, I'm sorry, you said we'd have to amend?
So there are two proposed motions on the letter. The first motion, I would say you need to revise findings of fact seven and eight to reflect that it's only precinct one and that it is, that precinct one is being housed at the Yarmouth Senior Center. And then for proposed motion one, I would make the amendment where it says being items one through eight, I would say one through eight as revised.
Okay. Well, starting from the beginning, we have the old King's Highway. Oh, we haven't gotten to that one. Okay.
Nope. So I would say the first proposed motion on page two, underneath the special town election, the proposed motion is I move that the select board adopt the findings of fact recommended in the town clerk's letter dated October 25th, 2024, being items one through eight as revised, to reflect in items seven and eight that only precinct one is being moved, and it is being moved to the Yarmouth Senior Center, and the same change for precinct, for item eight. And further adopt the additional findings that a copy of said letter dated October 24th, 2024, was posted on the town website on October 25th, 2020. That should say 2024. My apologies.
I'd make that motion, and I'd like the record to reflect, not because I want to, but I think we don't have a choice, unfortunately. Do I have a second on that motion?
Could I hear the motion restated? Sorry.
Happy to.
Oh, no, I meant, I meant what Tracy was saying.
My motion.
You were going with the first option?
No, I'm going with the, I'm going, well, she, the way that she said the motion was that we are going to have precinct one at the senior center.
Correct. Okay. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then the second motion related to that is that I move the select board assign the Yarmouth Senior Center at 528 Forest Road West Yarmouth as a designated polling location for precinct one for the special election to be held in the town of Yarmouth on December 7th, 2024, and direct the town clerk to take any act or action necessary on behalf of this lockboard in accordance with the provisions of Master and All Our Chapter 54, Section 24, and 950 CMR 51. In sequence, the regulations for polling place accessibility for elderly and handicapped voters.
Do I have such a motion?
I make a motion to follow exactly as the town clerk said for that complicated set of meeting requirements.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that being the case, the next motion we would need is for, to adopt a ballot warrant.
Actually, Mary, if we go back, there's Old King's Highway Annual Meeting and Election.
On your agenda, you had the special election, I think, first, and we can go back to Old King's Highway once you're done with this, if you want.
Move that the select board adopt the warrant for the December 7th, 2024 special town meeting election as presented by the town clerk and directed that the warrant be duly advertised and posted in accordance with vast general laws and the Town of Yarmouth charter bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I hereby make the motion that the select board hereby delegates its authority given under Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Acts 2022, to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling places for one or more precincts at every election therein, to preserve order and protect the election officers and supervisors from interference with their duties and to aid and enforce the laws relating to the election, the chief of police, in consultation with the town clerk.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we move on to Old Kings.
So Old Kings Highway, if I find my first page. We are proposing that you call the annual meeting to be held here in the town hall hearing room on November 25th, which is the Monday. It is an annual meeting and election, so we treat it like an election for warrant purposes, but it is a meeting of the Old Kings Highway Regional District. Anyone north of Route 6, for those that aren't familiar, anyone that resides north of Route 6 and is a registered voter can participate, and they will be electing one member to the Old Kings Highway Committee.
Do I have such a motion?
So there are two motions on the bottom of the first page of the letter.
You'd have to read it out here, right here.
Okay. I hereby move that the select board adopt the warrant for the November 25th, 2024 Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting and Election, and direct the town clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the charter and bylaws of the Town of Yarmouth and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I further move that the Board of Selectmen set the date in...
Is that still in that motion? No, you do the...
You can do them together.
You can do them together?
Okay.
That the Board of Selectmen set the date and time of Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 4:30 PM, to be the deadline for candidates to obtain nomination papers from the town clerk's office, and Wednesday, November 20th, 24, at 4:30, to be the deadline for candidates to return nomination papers to the town clerk's office for certification to be included on the Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting ballot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only other item I wanted to mention is that for the special election, the last date of registered vote will be Wednesday, November 27th, 2024. So that is the day before Thanksgiving. We, under state law, we are required to be open until 5:00 PM that day, so my office will be holding a special voter registration session all day until 5:00 PM. They typically go nine to five. We will go 8:30 to 5:00 because those are our regular office hours with the added half hour at the end of the day.
Oh, my goodness.
It's the nature of the date.
Yeah, the nature.
And it's prior, so.
Thank you for your commitment to democracy.
Thank you very much for your time and support. I really appreciate it, as does my staff.
Oh, absolutely, to all of you. To all of you. I mean, you're over and above for us on this.
And if any questions come up, we will be here. We will certainly be here all day and night this week, and on Saturday, if any questions come up, we're happy to answer them. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Fiscal year 2026 budget calendar and budget policy statement. Bob?
Madam Chair, just to kick this off, I'd like to at least get a motion on the floor and then allow some discussion and presentation.
Okay.
So I'm just going to make a motion that we approve the budget statement prepared for the board in the calendar as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Okay. Thank you very much. A few words, now that the pumpkins are all carved and out on the stoop, it's time to start the budget process for the ensuing fiscal year if there's not enough going on. So really put us in good stead for everyone being busy. There's a very detailed budget calendar that I think is great to keep as a reference document. I won't go over each and every one of the little steps, but a few key highlights that we need to know about. With the approval of the schedule on November 1, we'll be presenting all of the materials to the department heads to begin preparing their budgets for the next year. We're already doing all of the wage projections, and all of that work is ongoing. Departments will have their budgets in to my office by November 29, and my process will take approximately one month. The schedule is to present a balanced budget to the select board on December 27, and so the board gets the budget on December 27. The finance committee also gets it at that same time, makes its recommendations over a two-month period. The finance committee recommendations will be due on February 26, and right around the beginning of March, we set March 4 as a proposed public hearing date for the budget and the capital plan, and the annual town meeting process all is set for April 29, which is last Tuesday in April, and that's the annual town meeting. So all of the references I make in here to what provisions are governed by the charter, but everything is carefully orchestrated with all other boards. There's the capital, there's the finance, there's the financial team, there's the departments, the select board. So that's our detailed schedule, and we will stick to it. We won't miss any of these dates. Now, the budget policy is a very important document. For those who haven't spent a lot of time with it, the purpose of the select board's budget policy is to eliminate any potential structural deficits in the budget where we have items that are either unfunded or have insufficient revenues for key town services, and it's designed to protect and improve the financial health of the town. I think you could look at it as the guardrails for the budget process. It's a general policy statement, the couple of the key items that are incorporated there. It ensures that the budget is driven by the goals of the select board, and also our financial management policies, which we have detailed policies covering all realms of the town's finances. And it also is clear that it requests us to reserve, as we have 2.5% growth in the revenues, a minimum of 2.5% growth for the school departments, both the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District and the Cape Cod Technical Regional School. It, again, to eliminate structural deficits, requires that contractual wage increases, any cost of living is incorporated in the budget with revenues to support it. All of the overhead items such as utilities, pension, health, general insurance obligations, fully funded, you know, fund a portion of them, spend all your money, and then leave those out. It provides for the OPEB contribution for the other post-employment benefits, those being future retiree health insurance costs, which we have an actuarial analysis, and the funding schedule for. It provides for capital spending at the levels that are supported by recurring revenues, and also we've included in here the road maintenance piece. You recall, that was a problem that we had when I first got here, that there was a over million-dollar override for road maintenance that wasn't being used for road maintenance, and we reinstated that in the budget, and we've maintained it since then as a part of the policy that we want to retain that override for that specific purpose. And that, again, it's a very good discipline in the budget process. There's a provision to protect the town's reserves, which is another area that historically the town had very extremely poor reserves, and now we've achieved a level that is best management practices, close to, and we're seeking to protect those reserves for any downturns in the economy. And it also has the debt set aside. We have very, very limited debt now that's underneath Prop 2.5, but any decline in that is reserved for future capital expenditures. And it also, you know, makes the declaration that as early as possible in the budget process on school spending, as it has in the past several years, the town will set aside sufficient funds to allow for an increase in school assessments up to 2.5% and funding requests beyond that will not come from reductions in primary town services. So it provides the flexibility to work out any difficulties, but it is clear that we have no intention to lay off police, firefighters, things of that nature, in order to meet educational spending, so it has a hold harmless there. And that's the guidance that goes to the town administrator, to the departments. We adhere to this guidance in presenting the budget that the select board sees at the end of December, and that, you know, kicks off our process.
Any questions? Comments? Tracy?
Nope.
I'm happy with the mark.
No, I'm fine.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me, too. I'll entertain a motion.
The motion's already on the table.
That is, I'm sorry. We've had our discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, moving on, we have board and committee actions, appointments.
Okay. Well, you'll be glad to know that the traffic is all going in the direction that we want it to go this week. We have no resignations, no goodbyes. For the first appointment, I'd like to appoint to the Disability Commission Glenn Martin for a three-year unexpired term that will take him through January 2027.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to appoint Caitlin Shea to the Library Board for a three-year unexpired term that will take her until February 2027.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make the following planning assignments through the board. They're one year through September 2025. Ken Smith on the Planning Board to the capital budget. Peter Slovac on the Planning Board to the Community Economic, wait.
Yeah.
Economic...
Development Committee.
Development Commission, thank you. Joanne Crowley to Community Housing. Susan Britta to Community Preservation. Jim Saban, oh, sorry, Susan Britta to Drive-In Utilization. My bad.
Right, and Joanne Crowley to Community Preservation.
Yeah, Community Housing and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Community Preservation.
Okay.
Okay. Susan Britta to Drive-In Utilization. Jim Saban to Design Review Commission and to Land Disposition Committee. Will Rubenstein to Water Resources Committee. And those would all be for one-year appointments through September 2025, when the committee reorganizes on its participation with other committees.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joyce.
Oh, well, do we want to, or does Tracy take these?
Tracy takes that, yeah. No, I turn, I turn the gavel over to Tracy.
Yeah, I asked the board to please appoint for 2024 a one-year agents of the Licensing Authority. They'll serve until updated list is submitted by the police chief and appointed... They'll serve until updated list is submitted by the Police Chief and appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The list is in your packet. It's Chief Kevin Lennon, Deputy Andrew O'Malley, Lieutenant Bryant, Lieutenant Bogdan, Lieutenant Cherketti, Sergeant Coville, Sergeant Reed, Sergeant Sukalas, Sergeant Wells, Sergeant Sheehan, Sergeant Donahue, Sergeant Victor, Sergeant Lundergan, Sergeant Appria, Detective Renzi, Detective Nuss, Detective Schnowies, Detective Zantini, Detective Ribbit, Officer Ambrosini, Officer Burnham, Officer Lanata, Officer Wenberg, Officer Marino, Officer Hare, Officer Giomarco, and Officer Ryan Murphy.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the minutes, we have a kind of a situation here that these are in regard to two meetings that both Tracy and Joyce were not present for. But we need to invoke the rule of necessity to have board members not present at the meeting be able to achieve an acquarium for approval of the minutes. This is for December 19.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of December 19, 2023.
Second.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of January 9, 2024.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us up to Agenda Review.
Madam Chair, I have one request to add to the next agenda. And it would be for a short update on Yarmouth's grant projects through the Second Green Communities Grant.
Got a separate email.
Could you repeat that, Joyce? What is that?
What is it?
An update on the second round of grant projects that we have from Green Communities. This would be for the second grant that the town received that was the competitive grant. And we committed to several projects with that, and I'd like an idea of where we are with them.
Okay, do you know how many grants that involves?
Was it a single grant and probably to three different projects? But, I mean, I don't need all the, I just like to know where they are.
The update.
Yeah.
Okay, there's one item that's on, under items that says, "Discussion Request for Delay of Implementation of Plastic Reduction Bylaw." My understanding is that this was actually something that was approved by town meeting and that this is not within our purview.
Who, how did that get there? I'm just curious.
This is a request from the Chamber of Commerce that they requested to meet with the Select Board to discuss this, that they met with the Board of Health previously. And I think it's their opinion that the immediate full enforcement of the ban on plastic in all of the stores and restaurants, they feel will have a drastic effect on the stores. They're working on an amendment to the bylaw that they'd like to put in for the Springtown Meeting. They have, you know, some alternatives and suggestions. And they, I met with them and they indicated that, you know, they recognize it is a bylaw. It is in force and they are just seeking to see if the town has any willingness to not fully enforce all of the requirements of it until, you know, they get a chance to present some alternatives that they say accomplish the same things in a way that doesn't hurt business as much. And.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
I'm very interested in hearing what the chamber has to say about this. This has not been, it's no surprise that there are businesses and others in the community that are complaining about this. What I'd like to suggest is that, and again, I'd look for some comments from the administrator on this, but my sense is it might be helpful to have a more spirited discussion after the election. And maybe the chamber can come in, you know, at the December 10 meeting. All right, where we can have a full board here to hear the conversation rather than having to rehash it again. So that's my thought. Is there any, my only concern would be as if there's a downside to that. Does the chamber miss a deadline? Is there some other downside?
Well, I think that the chamber is quite concerned that, you know, the impact on businesses and stop and shop and people like that is going to be so huge that they may not have enough time to, if we're not willing to at least accommodate somewhat of a rampant period, that they may not have enough time to respond and remove all the.
Your recommendation would be not to put it off until after the election, but to try to stick with that timeframe.
Yeah, I, at least maybe have an initial discussion of it. I mean, I wouldn't want to say put it on the 10, December 10 and then tell them no. And then everyone is scrambling over the next holiday period to try to figure out how they're going to take all of the plastic off their shelves.
Well, what are we doing now? Because according to the bylaw that was passed, this was effective September 1, 2024.
No, they amended it on the floor.
On the town meeting floor?
Yeah, and changed it to January.
Got it.
Do we have the, the question is before we have the discussion, do we have that authority?
Yeah.
You know, I asked Town Council and Town Council said, you know, the bylaw stands, obviously, but the enforcement of it is, you know, under the purview of the selectmen. So I suppose that you could delay enforcement efforts, maybe embark on a, you know, a staged enforcement and, you know, we could do just more outreach on January 1 and let people know about it. So.
I'm uncomfortable with going against a town meeting article like this. It reminds me a little of a couple of years ago with the pandemic when there was a vote not to enforce the health regulations and the specific application to bars. And I'm really uncomfortable with special treatment non-enforcement.
Well, I think we should have the discussion. I think we should have the discussion with, I mean, I don't think we can have the discussion now because it's not on our agenda, but I think we should definitely, I mean, I'm all in favor of, I'm surprised it took us this long because I personally tried to find the business communities' interest in trying to overturn this some time back and there wasn't any, so I'm just surprised it's been this long.
It would have been nice if it were more timely, you know, if we'd gotten it a little while ago because we had special town meeting coming up in which we could have treated it.
So with respect to that item, I guess where we're at is that rather than.
Leave it on.
Leave it on, let them come in and make, let us know what the problem is.
Okay, any other additions to our November 12 meeting? Anything else anyone feels that we should have on there?
Refreshments?
Yeah. That'd be nice. I think that the review of the town meeting articles, you know, I like to see that we have some time available to really delve into that. This is kind of our chance to do kind of a preview of town meeting for people. So.
Okay, then we'll go ahead with that for November 12. We then have our meeting actually at 5 o'clock before the special town meeting. We never have a set agenda for that, do we? That I under.
We usually just go over the articles.
We'll go over the articles. Yeah. Now, what we should probably do tonight is, or at least soon, is make sure that, okay, we're having the assignment of the articles on the 12.
That's all still happening then, yeah.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, well, why don't we just, that takes care of that subject. Any individual items that anyone has this evening? Mark?
No, I just want to reflect for just a minute on the presentations that we had today from the Historical Commission. I thought, I thought today was a very, very important day. It's nice to see committees and staff working together on a priority that the board has laid out and to take it on with such seriousness. You know, we've talked about this in our, in our goal-setting meeting, you know. I brought it up, I harp on it all the time. And I'm just, I mean, this is, this is what comes out and it's, today was, I think, a very important meeting. And the work that they're doing is, it's just, it's not only important, but it's nice to see committees working together, staff working together, everybody sort of pulling together.
Common goal.
Yeah, on a common goal, a common mission. And everybody's sort of buying into the, to the whole concept, which I think is great. So there's a lot to be, there's a lot of merit in all of this. And clearly, there's a fair amount of excitement and enthusiasm, so I was just glad to see. I was not expecting this. This was somewhat unexpected tonight to see the present, the depth and the significance of the presentation. You know, again, I'm just sort of awestruck on the number of people in the town of Yarmouth that were involved and serving during the Revolutionary War. It was literally the whole town of Yarmouth, more or less, went to war.
Yeah, and all the women stayed behind and ran the businesses and.
But the community all sacrificed.
They did.
Everyone pitched in. And to the extent that we talk about the women, they pitched in as well in their own, everyone pitched in in their own way. So it's just sort of, now, what would be interesting to see is to what degree other communities on the Cape, I don't know if other towns are putting the level of effort that we have put in, but it wouldn't surprise me if, you know, Yarmouth's not alone, that there are other communities on Cape Cod that stepped up. So that's my, that's my item for today. So thank you to everyone in those commissioners, the commissioners, the committees, everybody involved in this effort. So once again, thank you.
Tracy?
I don't have anything.
Okay, well, what about Matta Key's Utilization Committee? We do have a letter that came in evidently from the Planning Board to the members.
Yes.
Do we want to put that on the future agenda to discuss or do we feel comfortable?
And do you want me to explain for just a second the parliamentary issue behind, the reason that's not on your agenda this evening? Because I, we received a letter from the Planning Board saying that, you know, it's almost like, you know, we want this on your agenda for October 29. And the procedure is if the Select Board has an item on their agenda and takes action, you can always schedule if you want to reconsider your action. But an outside party cannot schedule you to reconsider your actions. That needs to be done by the Select Board. And for that reason, the letter was distributed and action would be required by the board to reconsider. So you don't have to be, you know, having every one of your items, someone could always ask you to reconsider anything. But it needs to be, once you make a decision, we carry it out.
Folks, just keep it in mind then for, as part of when we meet again on November 12 and talk about future agenda items, if anyone considers and feels that this should be brought up, we can do it at that time.
Okay, consent agenda. Bob?
Okay, we have, the Lions Club has a fundraiser coming up on November 2. And also the shellfish regulations are in there and donations. First of all, I think it's worth noting on the Parker's River Boardwalk Park, the plank sales, the first tranche of funds that the board has approved for future construction, maintenance, operations of the park are in for nearly $26,000. So that is hopefully going to be a nice endowment to make sure that park is well taken care of.
Consent agenda with thanks. Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, any updates?
Yes, I have a couple of items for update. The first one I wanted to talk to you about is a subject that we had a brief discussion previously and it's about the MPO, Planning Designee, which is Peter Q. Smith. And we had researched, when he had resigned from the board, the process for whether he stays on or how it's done. And so the process that we uncovered and discussed previously was that he was elected to that position independently and he has a three-year term and he stays in that position. And if he were to just simply resign it, it doesn't go to the Select Board. It goes back to another election that they would, you know, pick someone else. And so Mr. Smith has indicated that he wanted to remain in that position. Now, the other piece that we uncovered is that he and he alone has the authority to appoint an alternate if he can't make the meetings. And so that's the reason that I put this up is that Mr. Smith has indicated that he'd like to designate Jeff Colby as his alternate. And that would protect the town so that in the event that Mr. Smith couldn't make a meeting, Jeff Colby is right on top of all of those issues. And he's also turned over the JTC leadership to our town engineer, Amanda Lima. So he doesn't have both of those on his shoulders. So I think it works out great for the town if Peter Q. Smith is going to keep his seat for the three-year term. That protects it for the town. His alternate would be our DPW Director, Jeff Colby. But everyone wanted to make sure that the Select Board, you don't have to vote it or anything, but you were okay with that. Or if, you know, the board had some concerns, then I'm sure those could be addressed.
Does anyone have any concerns?
No, I think it's, it's great to do it, but I would recommend that we do vote it and endorse it, all right? Just so that we're on record as supporting it because we were, yes. So I'd post that on the agenda.
Put that on the agenda then.
So that it's posted and we vote it, just so that it resolves any doubt on anyone's mind. His authority and support from the board.
And I think highly of the qualifications of the two people thought of as alternates. I just feel bad to put another task on them because they're so busy, but, you know, maybe.
Well, the reality is, is that Jeff does go, I serve on the MPO and Jeff is there at a lot of the meetings.
Oh, okay.
Because he's there doing what a good DPW Director would do and that he's tracking how Yarmouth's projects are faring.
Yeah.
And, and he's there if there's a question or an issue. He's rarely called upon to chime in, but he's there paying close attention to what's going on, so.
It makes me feel less guilty, Mark.
Exactly. So you're not, you're not putting a huge burden on him.
No, and I've discussed with Jeff and he's very much in favor of it. And I think we're all very appreciative to Peter Q. Smith for, you know, thinking of the best way to protect the town's interests and to make sure that we're up on everything. And so, you know, but Jeff's in favor of it. Okay, that's great. Now, a couple of other quick things I wanted to mention that the Matta Keys Util, Matta Keys, Matta Keys Utilization Committee, yeah, it's a mouthful, has set its first meeting for November 6 at 6:00 p.m. That's going to be posted and I just want to highlight Bill for, he's done a tremendous amount of work in preparing this and putting together a whole team to analyze the conditions of the building and things and get that, you know, running right from the start. So, but if anyone wants to attend that meeting or look in on it, it's going to be on the 6th.
It'll be on Zoom also.
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. on the 6th.
And there's a remote access that will be put on the website for that. And I wanted to mention also, I took a tour and I think some of the other members of the board have taken a tour of the new fire training building that has been constructed out at Fire Station 3. And I'll have to tell you that that facility has far exceeded my expectations in terms of the quality of construction and, you know, the steel that's in place. It's a very solid building. It's a very solid building. I think everyone knows that the status of it right now, it's been completely built, and it has the smoke feature in it that can completely blackout all vision. The one thing it doesn't have in it, they ran out of funds to do the burner, which is a propane burner that produces actual heat. But I met with the chief and also Steve Cohn, the former Fire Marshal for the Commonwealth, that has helped put that project together, and they feel that it is suitable for fire training purposes now. So I want to say that we're going to have a future agenda item as soon as, you know, things quiet down and they're ready to roll, to have the county in and to discuss handing that over to the town as they promised, and we have the agreement with them at no additional cost to the town. And the training can start, it is an impressive facility. I think it's going to be great for the Cape. And I honestly think that there's probably another $250,000 that's needed Cape-wide. That's not a lot of money to do a Phase 2 finish, to actually put that propane burner in it. And I think we can work with our legislative delegation to, you know, find those funds and to do it. And I really, I got to thank the county for sticking with this project. They could have just sent the money back and dumped it, you know, especially when, since 2017, the costs went up so high they couldn't completely finish it. But it was done responsibly, and the thing that I'm happy about is the chief and the deputy chief are happy with the facility. And so, anyway, you're going to get an update on that, but I wanted to let you know I did take that tour, and that's coming. Last thing I wanted to mention is, on November 14, at 2:00 PM, we have our DY School Budget Meeting, which is that meeting that last year we promised we would have before the budget process starts. And I think it's been a couple of weeks, I wanted to have it a little earlier in trying to get everyone to agree.
What day was that?
November 14.
It's, that's a Thursday, November 14. It's going to be at 2:00 PM, and I think it's up at the Superintendent's Office. And the idea is that we have our liaison chairman, we have the finance committee, and our financial team. And Dennis is going to do the same. So we're going to be with the Dennis folks, talking to the school about what their prognosis is for, you know, their budget process. So I hope you can make it, and it'll be, it'll be interesting, we'll hear them out. I've heard some preliminary information, I met with Dave Flynn and Mark, and I know that it's another tough year for them. They indicate they're going to be strapped to try to make it within two and a half percent, they may not be able to, but we're going to discuss those issues. And, you know, I think at some point, you know, it may be a good idea to bring up the relationship with, you know, the test scores and what their game plan is on all of that. So, but I just want to make sure people knew about the 14th, and I think that's kind of it for now, but a couple of critical items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
It's good to have the conversations early.
Yep.
You're looking for a motion? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.